Okay, we'll go ahead and get the meeting started. Welcome to the City Work Session for Tuesday, 26th of January. And the topic tonight's Department Head Updates, but we'll begin with a Pledge of Allegiance. If you could join me with that?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, to being a work session, we won't be taking any votes or anything of that nature tonight. So Ron, I guess you can take it from there.
Test, test, there we go. Okay. Good evening Commissioners, it's good to be with you again. Just kind of, some of this I'm going to run through. We kind of covered a little bit at your retreat on Friday and just wanted to kind of do a quick overview. Obviously, 2020 was a challenging year for us. COVID dominated our landscape and everything else that we did. And so that led to a lot of uncertainties and unpredictability, which led to spending reductions, hiring freezes, program cancellations, leave policy changing. Tammy had to literally, and Katie, rewrite our HR manual for COVID leave. And we had other federal mandated leaves. So there was a, there was a lot of adjustments we had to make relative just on our own administration, our pandemic emergency ordinances that we passed for certain parameters. And we appreciated your support for those. Certainly, there was a lot of those type of things. I want to give a shout out to Scott and Vivian and the folks that worked in the EOC. Huge effort, still ongoing as they deal with all kinds of issues. Not, not the least of which is helping to try and get everybody vaccinated with not knowing how many vaccines are going to come each week. So some real challenges there, but proud of the way everybody stepped up and, and met things head on, including you all. So thank you so much for, for all of that. That led to lots of change in our operational staffings, our cleaning protocols. The, we had an internal review committee that looked at all the plans as we tried to re-stage and reopen some facilities to make sure it was going to be safe and, and try to provide some level of programming and facility openings. We had the dining platforms and other street right-of-way sidewalk dining and easements, easing of those regulations. We had the business loan program that the Chamber graciously helped us with, the rent and mortgage payment program through CDBG. So there was just a, a number of ventures and then the whole Spark funding through the county and compliments of the state and figuring out what was eligible and, and maintaining and tracking all of those expenses. And we're still, still doing that. So that was certainly a big component of dealing with COVID. Project wise, Aggieville, we spent a lot of time there relative to the 12th Street project and designing for the parking structure, which we've broken ground and started construction. And then just the whole planning for parking changes and hourly rates and, and aspects to how do we accommodate during construction. North Campus Corridor, finished North Manhattan Avenue in the final phase of that. And that was a really great improvement as you look at the three phases of North Manhattan, all the way from Claflin up to Kimball and, and really creating a, a great corridor. Almost all of that three phases funded by our local economic development sales tax funds. Other aspects were the KDOT grant funding we got for Kimball, two different stages, as well as the Kimball and College intersection, the half-cent sales tax ballot initiative, and e-scooters launched with K-State. It went fairly well. Appreciate the work that Jared and his committee and group have done on that. All of this while trying to rebuild our finance and HR divisions, departments relative to staffing and some of the shortfall and challenges that we had there. Brought on some additional staff in the City Clerk's Office, processed over 300 City Commission Agenda items, including the face mask ordinance renewals, as well as some of the public rights away. So those are just a few of the things that we dealt with in, in 2020. And we appreciate the Commission's support for that. Some moving forward for some priorities and key issues for '21, addressing some of those carryover items that have been, were there for us to do in '20 that we never got to and we suspended, such as the housing study, the UDO and annexation study, and the lease notices and addendums from the flood, flood areas. More work to do in Aggieville. You'll be hearing a lot of that on upcoming Commission meetings, as well as three different projects in the North Campus Corridor on Kimball, two in the actual corridor and one out by Candlegood. Looking at how we implement the half-cent sales tax even in, in '23 and looking at the Housing Advisory Board and the workforce housing components of that and knowing that those revenues are coming, how that might relieve some of those existing funds that were pledged for debt service in the interim. Really, one of the big focuses for us moving forward is that five-year strategy and our organizational excellence initiative. And obviously, we talked a lot about that and I'll speak on it a little bit more. Still would like to do some streamlining of our Commission packets and we visited with you a little bit about that. Focusing on our, improving our communications as we look to the, the '22 budget development, not knowing what the legislature is going to put to us, but we know there's likely to be some changes there. And then just focusing on our, our day-to-day operation and service levels, you know, from the hiring freeze where a lot of positions down and it's going to take a while to, to fill those back up as we did finish the 2020 year in a, in a better financial condition than we thought we would. But primarily, that was due to a lots and cuts and savings and cost avoidances throughout the, out the year and not as bad a sales tax as we thought there, there might be. Organizational excellence initiative, those are some of the key components. Trying to be an employer of choice, looking at having creative and robust recruitment processes, a healthy and motivated workforce, enviable retention of talented employees. We spend a lot of time and money training folks that we'd like to keep them around. Fair and consistent and responsible business practices, open and honest communication channels and excellent services to our constituents. So this will be both an organizational and, and community benefit. If we can reduce our turnover and invest in our employees, we will increase morale and we can also increase efficiency and, and quality of services for the community. Spend less time training new employees because we've lost trained ones and more focus on developing current talent to enhance our services, projects and programs. Our OEI Initiative Friday, last Friday at your retreat, we, we spent a lot of time on this, but really it's our vision to become a better people-oriented organization and a great place to work, organization that cares about its people and its people care about the organization and community. So those strategic areas we're looking at are pay, performance evaluations, benefits, our work hours, our workplace environment, and of course, the budget. And so this evening, you're going to hear a lot from departments, some of the key things they were able to accomplish last year despite a COVID, as well as some of their key initiatives for this year and some of the challenges that they're going to have. And we put Parks and Rec last because we've got some special challenges there. I know you've indicated some desires and services you want to make sure we have this year that we, we eliminated last year. And so it'll certainly be a time to talk about some of those opportunities and, and share some of that with you and share with you some of the challenges that we have. And I think we're going to kick it off with, any questions before we go there? I think maybe it might be best, I think everybody is here in person and not zooming in, right? So as we go through, it might be best just while, while that department head or that employee is here, if you have questions, let's just make this interactive as we go along. I think that would be best. So with that, I'll introduce Jesse Romo, our Airport Director.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Please hold all questions to the end despite what was asked. Just kidding. So our 2020 review, biggest thing we got accomplished was the parking lot improvement project. That was about 10 years in the making there, substantial completion, December 21st. We also were able to complete the airport master plan update. That ended up becoming a two-year effort. That rolled right into design for our future runway reconstruct project. As a reminder, that design grant is going to be two federal fiscal years. The first one is 2020 monies, which are 100% costs or share because of the CARES Act. So it reduces cities burden quite a bit. We'll find out later this year on the, the '21 share, but that was a significant help for us. Another big help was getting the CARES Act grant. That was $2.1 million on our normal, about $1.5 million operating budget. So we were able to reimburse ourselves a little over $900,000 in expenses for 2020. That also allowed us an opportunity to extend rent relief to several our tenants that were directly impacted by the reduction of air travel. And we implemented a lot of new standards, new cleaning procedures, frequency, additional hand sanitizing stations, all those things rolled into effect almost immediately when COVID-19 hit. For this year, we're going to keep on doing what we've been working on, which is the runway design. We're about 35% complete right now. Our intention is to get this done by the end of this calendar year and to have it ready to go out to bid next year, have a FA construction grant come out so that way we can have actual physical construction in '23. We're also narrowing down all the different things that need to be decided upon for the runway reconstruct, which also impacts eligibility for federal funds and how much the city share is going to be on those. And so we're doing all we can to seek alternative funding to help assist with those items. Our next steps for parking management is to actually implement the fee, which is going to go into effect February 1st, so we're just right around the corner from it. We'll also be doing some additional outreach efforts with customers and just throwing it out there, expect some, we expect some hiccups with the system. It's brand new to all of us, so we'll do our best moving forward. Our future issues that we have, I mentioned the runway reconstruct. We expect that to occur in '23. We also have the taxware way rehab and repair that will follow the runway, which means that for the next several years, we're going to have a lot of our money tied up, our federal funding money tied up into those two projects. As far as constraints go for '21 and '22, a lot of it's going to be driven by outside factors that we have no control over. Recovery from COVID-19, with employment's down, revenues are down. We need those back up. We're hoping that, you know, things start to improve sooner than later. We are anticipating some additional funding to come from Congress. They were originally going to announce from the FA amounts by the end of this calendar month, but with administrative turnover and things occurring in DC, we're still just kind of eagerly awaiting to see what our new amount is going to be. So that'll be something that will move forward and we'll come back to you with that as a grant agreement. We're staffing right now at critical low levels. We're kind, kind of this is by design. And if you recall, you know, when we had to create a security team, we did it in the middle of a fiscal year. It wasn't something that was planned. So by design, we went with the, you know, what was going to be the lowest cost. How many people can we do for the least amount of coverage that we're required to have? But with that, we've had additional changes, this is prior to COVID-19. We had additional changes in airline activity, which put a little bit more burden on the, on the staffing. We had later flights coming in, we had an earlier flight coming in, so now all of a sudden, we're getting really close to having to have 24 coverage. If we have 24 hours a day coverage, it'd probably be about two people more that we're going to need at least. So that's something that we're going to continue to look at as we rebuild air service and additional duties just keep piling on. The other item that we're really monitoring not only is our staffing, but our CIP. So over the last couple of years, you know, we've taken some hits on, on things that we need, you know, equipment needs, tractors, trucks, what have you. As we continue to kind of kick that can down the road, we're creating a funnel. And so at some point, it's going to pile back up on us and instead of having one or two things to replace, we're going to have multiple things. So, you know, with the, trying to do more with not just less, but the minimal levels continues to be one of the challenges we foresee in the future, especially when most, everything that we do is under federal requirement too. So not a lot of wiggle room for us to back out and say, oh, we're not going to do that. We have to keep pressing, pressing forward. And those are all my slides. I'm happy to hand it over to Community Development and step away from the microphone unless there's a question.
Linda Morris, hi. I wanted to know, I know that we got CARES money and it was for two years. How much of it is left for 2021? Because you would have, of course, spent some in 2020.
Yeah, so the CARES Act grant gave us $2.1 million and four years to draw upon that money.
Four, okay.
Right, you have four years to draw it down. The first year, which is last year, we drew down a little over $900,000. So there's a little bit more than 1.1 million left. So it'll be for this year and, and next, if we have any leftover for next year.
Thank you.
Sure thing.
So is that reimbursable type stuff? We spend the money, then they'll pay it back to us at some point or generally?
Correct. It's all for eligible expenses that we get reimbursed for.
Which would be salaries and abatements and various other day-to-day operation type expenses?
Right. Salary, normal operating expenses. We anticipate similar rules to come out for the new money, but I'll let you know as soon as we hear that too.
Just Commissioner ready. For security, I forgot, are we contracting that out or is that RCPD?
We contract portions. So we have a, a large chunk that we do all on our own. We have a portion that we contract out and then we have the partnership with RCPD for, you know, LEO enhancement.
Right, so when we don't need the security, is it the contracted one that we say you don't have to come now or is it RCPD? Which one, I guess?
When we have reduction of flights?
Yeah.
So when, when there's reduced flights, our staff is, is still there and they have their requirements. The contracted staffers are the ones that we pull back on. And RCPD ends up pulling back if there's not additional flights for them to be at.
Okay, and my other question is, since we are going to start charging February 1st, have you been doing a lot of PSAs and announcements on how this might go or how people might pay? Or do they find out as they enter? I don't know what we're working as far as communication to the public.
So, so far, we've done some social media posts and we also have posters that have gone up inside the terminal. And so we're trying to spread the word in that way and, and we've had some phone calls that we're feeling on it.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, good to be back in the room with you all. So our overview for 2020, obviously COVID response was one of the first things right out of the shoot in, in March. And Chad, my Assistant Director, did, spent a lot of time researching software packages, hardware and procedural issues to deal with virtual meetings and more specifically statutory public hearings and how to conduct them in a virtual environment. And so he spent probably four, four good solid weeks researching how other cities in Kansas and around the country were doing that. And then that really helped us launch how we were going to do it here in Manhattan to accommodate the public within a public hearing environment. We also maintained almost all of our services while my entire department was basically working virtually and not in City Hall for most of the time. I did have one or two employees that would come in once or twice a week to do the things that just have to be done in person. And we also assisted the City Manager's Office and MISA in them setting up the rental assistance and mortgage arrears program that they were using city money and they'll be applying for some of our CDBD money, we're thinking here in the near future. We spent a lot of time doing the flood plain mitigation. We had three grants that we were still working on. We closed two of them out. We still have one that hasn't been closed out. There's one last house that's going to be moved, we think, out of the city and then we'll be done with those, but it's 17 dwelling units in all. We also provided you the work session on the flood mitigation policies, the full range of things that we were working on, including prioritizing how we would do buyouts, starting to identify dedicating funding source for that 25% match that we're supposed to have to get the FEMA buyout money. We also, within that work session, we talked about the Wildcat Creek policy updates, the duty modeling, the flood mitigation benefit estimator. CRS has the Community Rating System, the, through our various flood plain management activities and public education activities, we have 20% discount citywide for anybody that has flood insurance. 2020 census was important. We managed and coordinated the Manhattan Raleigh County Complete Count Committee. Aggieville, we spent a lot of time supporting Jason and his efforts. We did the design review on the parking garage building permit. We designed an online public survey for that Raleigh Alley House conceptual designs and for that discussion for the community. We worked with a local historic preservation consultant and SHIPO to do the email historic survey, which was completed. CDBG was a big year. We had the new five-year consolidated plan that had to be adopted, as well as the 2020 action plan for this year. And then the analysis to impediments for, to fair housing, which has to be adopted or updated every five years. We got the 2020 allocation, which was a little bit less than last year. And we had to turn right around and amend our consolidated plan twice to recognize those two CARES Act allocations that we got of 634,000. We did rehab nine low and moderate income homeowner homes so that they could stay in their homes. They were, you know, keeping them livable with things like new HVA systems, windows, lead radon abatement, asbestos abatement, that type of thing. And we funded five of your social service agencies with some of our CDBD money. ESC is the emergency, emergency grant that we used with both MISA and the Crisis Center. And we closed out the 2019 year. We got the emergency allocation of CARES money, which was basically 200% of last year's regular allocation. And then we also applied for the 2020 grant year, which was delayed by about six months. The 2020 program year just started here in January of '21. And then we had, we spent a lot of time working with the auditors and, and finance and Reno. We, our 2018 CDBG and our 2019 FEMA grants were all audited. There were no significant findings. And then our CLG, which is the Certified Local Government for Historic Preservation, it wasn't an actual audit, but it's kind of the closest thing SHIPO has to an audit and they had no significant findings. For 2021, for my department, OEI really is a top priority. Every one of my staff members is in one or more of the OEI committees, as well as participate in the Health Committee, Diversity and Inclusion, Technology, Smart City and Web Page Committees. And as you know, we liaison to about 10 different boards and committees that are all listed there. And we're about to take on the new Housing Advisory Board when that gets up and running later this year. We, a lot of our time is facilitating the development review and approval process and citizen engagement. And while that was down a bit this year due to the pandemic and just less development going on, it, it still takes a lot of time in coordinating with the other departments internally, as well as external agencies. Again, grant administration for this year will be important with CDBG, the ESC and FEMA. Well, we probably won't apply for any FEMA grants unless we have local match within our budget. But we also provide a lot of research and support to other departments that are using either CDBG or other types of grants. The projects that Ron already talked about for this year, obviously UDO and the Wildcat Creek are both important to get finished and adopted. The Plaza West and McCall Connection Area Plans, those are the two Brownfield grants that the Brownfield grant is going to pay for actual more land use planning, what-if plans. And those have to be done by September because that grant ends in September. Before I talk about the future issues, let me just touch on what we haven't been able to do, both because of the flat city budget and because we have a vacant position, vacant planner position that's about one and a half years now vacancy. So we could not apply for flood mitigation funding this past year again because we don't have a funding source for that 25% match within the budget. We canceled the housing RFQ and, and that study because of the anticipated funding shortfalls due to the pandemic. We changed the focus of the department. You know, we have current planning and zoning administration, as well as the long-range policy planning. And we had to pull back from a lot of that policy planning and, you know, which is the Wildcat Creek and UDO and some of that downtown tomorrow. And, and we concentrated more on the current planning and just development review activities. We had to reassign our resiliency planner, who's the one that was really heading up the Wildcat Creek project. And we had to move her over to cover the Board of Zoning Appeals because that's the vacant position that we have would cover BZI as well as housing issues. And so moving her over to that made us have to pull back again from our resiliency activities, which, other than just finishing out the two, the three buyout grants, we lacked the capacity to increase our CRS activities, to increase the, the insurance deductions that we can get. We were wanting to get up to 25 or 30%, we're right now at 20% insurance deductions, but until we can dedicate more time to public education, we won't earn the points to, to get those increases in insurance deductions. Along with that, we couldn't expand our flood communication activities and we have yet to establish our Community Resiliency Committee, which would work on more than just flood mitigation types of things. It would be a broader resiliency for the community. As you know, Wildcat Creek Management Plan was slowed down due to less capacity, staff capacity. We did almost no neighborhood MHK efforts this year, again, just because of staff capacity issues. UDO was delayed due to capacity issues through, in several departments, not just UDO was delayed due to capacity issues through, in several departments, not just community development, but the Attorney's Office as well as Public Works, which are all critical departments to be able to spend time working on that. Same with the annexation study. Due to the pandemic, the city really shifted, you know, set that aside and had to shift to pandemic response. And so, we, we have, I'm looking ahead to completing the annexation study. There's capacity issues in several departments that need to be addressed to really be able to start taking off these, these various projects. But again, future issues for, for my department and the community, obviously is the annexation study, the new Housing Advisory Board that will be taking on the liaison duties for initiating the housing study and the policy strategy. And we would like to start revisiting the Downtown Tomorrow Plan. There's the southwest corner downtown and kind of the northern portions that have some underutilized land. So, our budget constraints and challenges, as I said, we're short-staffed. It's one position, but it's ten percent of my staff that's been vacant for a year and a half. And so, it's a matter of priorities and saying, no, you know, what are we going to do? What are we not going to do? And that's kind of getting to the point of being non-sustainable. So, we really need to try and fill that vacant planner position. It's, it's supposed to be the BZA and housing emphasis. The other things I have on here are broader for the organization and the community. We really need to look at funding the OEI initiatives so that we're an attractive and competitive organization. And as Ron said, that we can retain employees and not just keep training people to go elsewhere. Manhattan also needs to compete, as I said last year, at the regional and global level. We need to grow the job base and retain professionals and broaden our workforce. And that can be done through placemaking activities like spitting out Aggieville that we're doing now, the North Campus Corridor, the downtown redevelopment. All of that obviously takes planning and funding and investment in, back into the community and into the organization. With that, if you have any questions.
I got a question. Well, if you go back a couple slides, if you can, to the grant administration. Yeah, so on the second, or second from the bottom bullet, the CDBG, that is funding that comes from HUD? And the ESG is Health and Human Services?
No, it's actually through the state of Kansas, mostly from HUD also.
Okay.
That, that, you know, typically that goes specifically for Crisis Center and MISA are usually the only ones that ask for money. And it's just a small piece of their pie, obviously, but it's important.
The, for, with those federal funds or with any of the grants, I guess, are there possibilities to expand in capacity as well? If you're, is, are those always off limits as far as?
CDBG has a limit, ten percent of our allocation can go to administration. We fund our housing rehab inspector in a different line item, so it's not in administration. But my, my grant administrator, that funds her a hundred percent. It funds my executive secretary, just a little bit, her CDBG time. And it funds my CDBG time as reimbursement. So, there really isn't much capacity to add staff with CDBG directly because there's, HUD puts limits on how much you can use for that kind of thing.
And the, I guess, the other one that's not on there would be home, if we applied for any home funding. But currently not on our radar.
Right.
All right, thanks.
Yes.
Mayor Commissioners, Scott French, Fire Chief. Just kind of give you a quick review of twenty twenty. First thing I want to start off with is our Pot County contract because this was the first year we had it implemented. And kind of basically, as you can see, we, we roughly hit sixty percent of what our original expectations were. And I think one of the things to point out here is we had expected about seventy-eight homes, single-family homes, which probably would have got us very close to where we expected to be. But at the beginning of that year, I think I mentioned that we had a lot of homes that were permitted, permitted in that December, right before we started the program. So, we knew we were going to start off somewhat with less revenue than we expected. With that in mind, one of the things we did was we didn't buy a second vehicle, so we didn't add that in. We did hire our two staff, however, with the reduction in staff overall in that department, we were down three numbers all, all through the, the year. So, in the end, we came out ahead. We probably spent fifty percent of what, what we expected, so we did good there. The other thing with risk reduction, as you remember, we had a lot of retirements within that division. We had retirement Brad Clausen, lost both of our building inspectors, our plans examiners. So, our big focus was training. And I think we did a pretty good job with that, seven hundred and fifty hours, six new ICC certifications amongst the staff. Really got our fire inspectors involved with our property maintenance because they were down two positions. They did some help in, in some of the different areas. Our biggest stumbling was in our plan review. That position takes a lot of knowledge, takes time to develop that position. And through last year, we actually went through two different plans examiners about the time we had them trained up and starting to roll. They resigned and went to the private sector. And so, at one point, we were, it was taking us twenty-one days to review a single-family home utilizing all of our different staff. And we did hear, hear about that through the building community. And luckily, we do have a really good relationship with FABA and work with them, explain to them. And, and we've gotten back on track and we're down to seven days, which is what we standard is. So, I think we're, we're heading in the right direction there. Emergency response, we did see about a seven, seven and a half percent reduction in calls this last year, which was roughly a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty calls. We did have four civilians, minor injuries due to smoke inhalation. I believe all four of them, they were able to, I believe all, all of them were cooking fires, related to cooking fires. We did respond to forty-six calls outside of the city limits. We have had, I think that number's climbed, we're a little bit over twenty-three members in our department that have, that have had COVID. However, one of the things I think is important is we have not reduced our level of service. We've been able to maintain all of our stations. And, you know, that's, that's really been a huge focus on our operations side with five different stations. Those guys living together, it's really been challenging. We've spent, unfortunately, probably some, most people don't want to hear, we spent over a hundred thousand extra in overtime costs because of how we had the staff to ensure that we didn't take out an entire shift. Because we went down to, all crews worked it very independently, which is not, not common with the Fire Department. We really rely on our multi-company training and getting together and, and working through things. And then we isolated every crew, every station. So, we didn't, we didn't allow for cross staffing. So, if overtime, if we were down in a station, we had to pull from that station. We didn't, we didn't allow somebody that worked at another station to come in and work at that. So, it did cost us quite a bit in overtime to do that. From the readiness and training and exercises, we added two additional hazardous materials technicians. That brought us up to thirty-six total with that training. And with MBAF coming on, that's, that's obviously a key training, specialized field that we're, we're focusing in on. We certified all of our operational personnel in our basic wildland firefighting and had a multitude of those end up getting their red card, which allows them to actually, if they're chose to, to, to be deployed outside of the, the state for wildland fires. Duke, our search and rescue canine, was one of four dogs in the state of Kansas, certified as a type one search and rescue dog, which allows it to be deployed with the, the federal FEMA teams. And, and we have used that dog on a number of ca, of occasions for missing persons in Manhattan. So, it, it has been an asset, not, not only for the state, but, but to us locally. We've licensed two drone pilots and have four more working on their certification. I don't know, we had that most recent fire and we actually deployed our drones and were able to find the hotspots on top of that, that hotel, which allowed our crews to get to, to areas of that that normally would, would have taken us much longer. We placed the new flat bottom rescue boat in service. The big reason we wanted, needed this was with the Kansas River. One of the problems with the Kansas River is the amount of sand, sandbars. And when that river's down, we've torn holes in, in our rubber boats. And so, this has allowed us to, to be able to run the river on six inches of water. And it's been deployed a number of times. We also put in service our second hundred and seven-foot quant at Firehouse Three. Now, we'll, we have two hundred and seven-foot ladders in the city. And so, likely what we will not be asking for is a replacement of our platform ladder, which is a ninety-five, which should save us about one point four million dollars, at least in the, in the near future. We purchased and implemented our eight hundred radio system with the county and the rest of the emergency agencies, and that is operational. And we were able to participate and assist with the required FAA airport, airport exercises. Jesse had mentioned earlier the, the federal mandates, and this is one of them, so we were able to complete that. And then finally, we were able to complete negotiations with the IAFF Local Two-Two-Seven-Five on a three-year contract and a one-year wage. And we were able to hold the salaries flat with the rest of the city employees. And we have started the meet and confer and start in the twenty twenty-two wage negotiations with the union as of week, week and a half ago. So, our twenty twenty-one priorities and, and the horizons and needs that we have are really, they haven't changed a lot from last year. Unfortunately, with COVID, many things were either tabled or slowed down to focus on the pandemic. And we spent a lot of time, a lot of my staff on, on different COVID-related issues. We, we need to focus in on a strategic approach to our CIP. Over the last five years, we have not really looked ahead because we've only been able to fund what is in front of us. It's not been a five-year plan, but more of a which item is most needed or which one can we afford. We have focused all of our CIP over the last five years on mission readiness. And, you know, it's important moving forward, we need to plan out the less noticeable, but still necessary items, such as the maintenance at the stations, carpet, kitchen remodels, major concrete replacements on curbs and, and just our training pad. And then we have an ADA elevator at headquarters that, that needs replaced. Another thing is if you've been to our headquarters fire station, every time it rains, you'll see a multitude of buckets. And those are to catch all the rainwater that's coming in because we, at some point, we need to replace that, that glass atrium. We have a nineteen ninety-two hazmat truck, which is overdue for replacement. And we've been trying to get that either through a grant opportunity or when the CIP is allowed. So, this will be a twenty twenty-two CIP request. We've ran into roadblocks on, on grants. I know as a community, we talked about how we sit financially, but based on the rest of the country and, and who we compete with, we haven't been able to, to meet that. And it's, hazmat trucks have never been a, a priority for the fire ground that we typically apply for. Our training site is still up in the air. And we need to, to plan out the future rather than wait for KSU Foundation and decide what they want to do. I think it's, it's, it's clear at some point they're going to want that ground. And the longer we wait and, and don't do anything, the price of property is going to go, is just going to continue to go up. So, we need to, to, to plan out how we're going to purchase some ground. And we do still, I believe that ground still is available, that we have a first right of refusal on. That ground originally was priced at six hundred and fifty through the, the, the joint maintenance facility, had that, that property appraised at six hundred and fifty thousand. I think the realtor on the property has it at one point two million. So, maybe there's some, some ground in there and we can work and maybe get to a, to a better mutually agreed-upon price. Let's put it that way. The county and city emergency operations center has moved to the headquarters facility for all major events. We've upgraded the network internet connection and the technology in the lecture hall. The two remaining large items that need to be funded to truly be a viable location as an emergency operations center is a backup generator for the billing and a technology upgrade in that large assembly room. Software upgrades and improvements continue to be a priority. The changes that were made in the IT division are very noticeable to us. And we look forward to working with them on projects and utilizing their expertise. We have purchased a staffing software that works well with Palacity that will be going online in the next thirty to sixty days. And we continue to look for ways to make our risk reduction software more viewable and transparent to the public and have been collaborating with community development to make it a seamless process from the beginning of a planning development all the way to the final construction and impairment of, of buildings. And then lastly, we need to get our staffing back to full strength. By the end of twenty twenty, we were down seven full-time positions and seven part-time positions. I commend all, all of my staff, as well as the rest of the city staff, on their resiliency and the amount of work that's been accomplished through this pandemic and these budget restrictions. This took a lot of extra effort and I'm proud of the dedication to our staff and the continued high-level performance we've had. One of the other things I didn't mention was our property maintenance. And they've been working with two people, that's a, that's a group that usually has four. And it is evident and noticeable, the difference those two positions make. It's fifty percent of the workload and we're getting fifty percent of the, the, the issues resolved. We have been able to maintain all of our, all of our complaints that have been filed. We've been able to deal with all those. And we've continued to be able to do all interior inspections upon request. I believe we've done sixty-seven interior inspections either through landlords or tenant complaints. And so, with that, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I wanted to ask a little bit more about the training ground. Now, right now, we use a property that belongs to K-State. I guess we lease it. When does that expire?
The expiration date is twenty thirty-four is the lease up on that.
Okay, so that's still a pretty long ways out. But, and so, the intention is to purchase land? Do you have a location?
We do have a, a location in mind, an area off of Amherst, behind Station Three. It's the nine acres behind Station Three and Red Bud Trailer Park is, is an option. Is one area that we've looked at. It's the most centrally located piece of ground that we have, have, have identified.
Okay, I was just curious if, you know, you've explored some other ideas, like maybe in the vicinity of the new joint maintenance facility?
We have, we've talked about.
There's extra land there. It might be cheaper. My other thought was, you know, Riley County's got that huge new firing range. I don't know if there's some way that we could do something there to save money, but just some thought.
No, those are, those are good ideas and we have looked at them. The one concern that we have with, with the joint maintenance facility is, is the railroad. And if we get blocked behind there, typically doing multi-company, we've got to be careful of getting them on the other side of the tracks and something happened, we can't get them on the other.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question regarding just your staff training in regard to, I think you were working towards mental health first aid training at one point. Does that ring any bells?
With our, well, we've been, part of the co, correlation with the mental health, we do have some certified personnel within our department that have been trained to help individuals within our own department. If that's, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, I, I kind of vaguely remember last year a goal of trying to get most of your staff cycled through that training.
Yeah, what we have is eight. Yeah, what we have is eight dedicated staff that have been gone, have gone through the training that allows any of our staff to go to them. Uh program they've developed. Dan Newton is a captain with us, who's who worked with Pawnee Mental Health and has has been a leader with that program.
Hi, Lynda Morse. Um I wanted to ask, uh gee, what was it? Uh my mind's been jumping around here. Oh, I wanted to ask about the rental inspection computer system or that's.
Rental database?
Database and as it displays to the web.
Uh huh.
Is it dysfunctional?
Uh huh.
Okay, and how long has it been?
Well, it it's not dysfunctional. What 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 it requires is manual uploading.
Yeah.
And so we've been working with GIS and and our our staff on taking our system and being able to uh mesh it with uh the GIS and ArcGIS, and that just hasn't, hasn't happened yet. Uh they've been working through it, but uh to make it so it's live, so it's constant. And and honestly, it 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 probably had oversight, it's probably out of date. I mean, the information on the webpage could be out of date because we haven't. That hasn't been a primary.
Had a lot of distractions this year too, so it probably.
So we'll make sure that gets updated and we'll get back with, uh I'll make sure that's a priority.
Hasn't been the highest priority all of of twenty twenty anyway. Uh I wanted to ask about, is it, is it possible for you to train with Riley County and Potawatomi County with fire? I think you already do a lot of that uh cooperation.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know how far out you go, but I know people do come here to train. Uh is there pro- is there any land up at the county shops? Would they be interested in in any kind of a, I don't know, I'm just brainstorming.
Sure, sure.
Or any, anything to, you know, land is high, high, pretty high cost.
It it is, you know, one of the the big concerns we have is if we go outside of the city limits. We are either gonna have to bring in overtime to cover or limit the amount of over, uh training that we can do. Uh already, when we we have a truck that's out of ho- you know, we've taken all the hose off the truck and then they're gonna have a call. All that has, all that equipment has to get back on that truck and and be able to respond. So if we go outside the city, we'll have to change the way we train uh and 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 look at some different options. I- is it possible? Absolutely. So it's it's not out of the question. It's it's possible, but wouldn't be my primary to go outside of the city. Or at least too far outside the city, I should say. That puts a, if we want to, as if we'll have a part of the city that will.
If we look seriously at the joint maintenance facility area by the sewage treatment or the VMI tract or the cooperating with Riley County or, I mean, at least there's, I know we wouldn't own it necessarily, but we certainly could, well, anyway, I'm just interested in exploring cost-saving measures.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
This is Commissioner Eddy.
Uh huh.
I just have a couple of questions for you, um and this might not even apply to you. Um there was a time we were looking at a um safety officer, and I think we had one, and then I don't know if we still do or not. Uh so do we have that?
The the safety specialist is a position in the city manager's office. Uh I believe they're on the, in the process of uh and Dennis might.
Interviewing.
Interviewing.
Okay.
Uh we do have a, one of our, uh my staff is on that, and we have helped out in the interim if there is a need, but that's out of the city manager's office.
And my other question is, I know you're a big part of the EOC group, and you know, you just talked about the firefighters that also had tested positive. Uh did all of you uh receive the vaccine?
We have all of the staff that are, at this point, has wanted it, yes. We are not requiring anybody or mandating anybody to take the vaccine. But we have at this point, everyone that has wanted it has received their first vaccination.
Okay.
Uh we, I believe we're just starting into the second doses.
All right. And um, okay, the staffing question is probably going to be there consistently, so we will address that as we move forward. Thank you.
All right.
Hi, I saw here, the, so my question goes back to the the headquarters fire station. Is it, is it strictly the 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 north training part of the land that K-State is probably gonna want back, or we're gonna have to move the whole station?
Uh all those have been options. And and I think where we're probably most likely is just the training site. Is is what they've indicated. And the main reason we started discussing that has to do with some other contracts that we have with them. And there was a a potential to go ahead and expand, extend our current lease with them much further uh with the caveat of of riding them back to training ground.
You know, you would, you would think that with the foundation buildings across the street and the, in BAF everything, they, K-State would want that fire station right across the street there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, I'll just add that, uh you know, we went through a, an exercise of accommodating the expansion of the EMS service at at Headquarters Fire Station before that construction, uh which never came about, uh was to occur though. We we talked about is is the corner, real estate corner right across from MBAF, the appropriate place for a fire station? And there's a lot of consternation about that as to whether or not that was the highest and best use for that corner. And so there was concurrence that everybody wanted a fire station close to the heart of campus. So even if it were to move, it would, it, they don't want it to move too far. So but as K-State does additional master planning, it's, there's a provision in that lease that we have that it can be terminated sooner. So uh those are just some of the things we're looking at from a long-term perspective. Obviously, they've got a development plan, looking at uh other locations like Purebred Beef. Uh you know, they're, they're on the last phase now of the of the research park, you know, of the new Stormont Vale component and the physician assistant. That's gonna fill up. There's not a lot of vacant tracks around, so it may come sooner, it may come later. But uh that's, that was planning for that and being able to have uh adequate training site for that's a huge, a huge thing to keep uh on our front page.
Scott Lynda Morse again.
Yep.
Um I see that you have the, an EOC reference here about, that's a priority. What is it you have in mind? It's on the.
Well, currently, the EOC is.
Priority.
Yeah, um I don't know if you've ever toured the actual county EOC. It's a closet and the training room at at Riley County Police Department. So that works well in weather events. Any other event outside of that, it doesn't work. So what we've done over the last three years, uh starting with the flood, is we moved any large-scale event to the fire department uh into our large uh assembly room. And the two priorities in that room, in order for it to be effective, is is a generator, a backup power system.
Sure.
The current uh generator at the station only, only powers part of the building. Uh so that's, that's, and that's on the other side of the building. So one generator that would power the whole building would be uh what we're, what we're talking about is a need there. And then just the technology upgrade to actually turn that into a more user, usable uh space for any, any type of large-scale event.
How obligated is the city to provide that?
That's, that's, that's a good question. That's, I mean, uh I, me personally, as the emergency, as a fire chief, I'm obligated to have a good space. I don't, uh uh personally, um
Sure.
Don't care who fa- who pays for it or who's responsible for it. Uh when we have a disaster, I want a good uh place that we can operate to be successful.
Sure.
So. So it'd be a great uh joint project, I I think it would be. And I think, you know, there's, there's a lot of grandiose plans in the future if uh the uh dispatch center becomes its own uh own space because RCPD's talked about needing to expand, you know, that 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 could be an option. And then and then someday, that might be the option, is we have a standalone emergency operations dispatch center uh and maybe get some other counties involved. But um we're just trying to deal with what we've got right now and and making a good usable space.
I'd like to spread the emergencies out further.
I am with you.
I'm sure you do too. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
You didn't get an introduction, Tammy.
I did? Oh, I did not. No, Tammy Galvane, I'm the Director of Human Resources and Risk Management and Interim Director of Finance for the City of Manhattan. And I think I'll start tonight just by telling you how we started twenty twenty and compare it to previous um years. We started twenty twenty with five uh positions in finance, accounting, and budget. We had ten budgeted. So we, we started the year kind of in an uphill battle. And some of the reasons that the department was that low on staffing, we're responding to commission requests to keep the budget as low as we could. So we've spent twenty twenty working to develop the staffing in the department and figure out what those vacancies were. We worked with AGH in October to figure out what their recommendations were for cities of similar size with similar features. Um so in twenty twenty, we were able to hire um three new employees. One was due to a resignation. Um so when we started twenty twenty, we had a director, a controller, our budget officer, two senior financial analysts. And then twenty twenty, we've added actually four positions. One was due to a resignation of one of the financial analysts, so we hired two financial analysts, a controller. And we've already, we've also hired a temporary staff accountant, who was a previous employee that relocated back to Manhattan temporarily and um had an interest in working with the city again. So that's been a great support to the finance department and has allowed us to catch up. And you'll see, one of the top things for twenty twenty review was we were able to complete the twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen audits in twenty twenty. That's a huge undertaking for a department to do generally. We're working on the previous year's audit each year, so we were able to get caught up. And that was at the detriment of our staff. Um we had our controller, our person who was the controller at the time, Rena Neal, who's our current assistant director. Our staff, um our senior financial analyst, Ashley McNatt, and our budget and operations officer focused on those nearly primarily in order to get through those in twenty twenty. Um and so for twenty twenty, we're, we ended the year. We're still looking for a treasurer and a staff accountant um to to get us up to speed in twenty twenty-one. We've been working with our financial advisor, Baker Tilly, to talk about a financial report card and debt dashboard so that we can have better control and be able to provide better information to the commission and to city administration. Um one of the things that they've talked to us about is having a twenty-five to thirty percent general fund reserve balance, um which is about eight million to ten million. And if you will recall, we're generally about three million, three and a half million, depending on the year. Um so we're gonna have to work towards getting that increased incrementally over the years. Um and that, again, we recognize that's gonna be part of that um five-year strategic plan that we're working on with Planning Next. But we want to make sure that we continue to work towards that. Because in years like this year, where if we hadn't gotten TERRS money or the airport hadn't gotten grants, we could be in a, we could be in a different position than we are without those funds. So we want to make sure that we're being good fiscal stewards of taxpayer dollars. We worked really hard in the finance department in twenty twenty um to operationalize the department. So we did a, a kind of mini-retreat inside the department in October twenty twenty to talk about functionalizing work and re-categorize some of the work to go into the buckets of the controller and get everything that's a controller function um into the controller position and the team that were, that supports those functions. We're also moving treasury duties under a treasurer function and that team and then budget and operations. This, the, the other thing that doesn't necessarily fit into the mold of finance and accounting is supporting the advisory boards for Aggieville Business Improvement District and Downtown Manhattan. Um so those things also fall to finance. Um and Rena just spent some time working on getting those billings out. And it's, it's a huge undertaking for the department. So um we've, we've kind of realigned those things and hoping that twenty twenty-one are a little bit more organized process for the department. We're gonna continue to work with our financial advisor, rating agencies, and continuing disclosure agents to to shift around some of the debt process to make it a little bit less um time um specific so that we have a little bit more time to respond to all the documents and get everything put together for those packets. Cause right now, it's a pretty quick turnaround, and that's not generally how um items come to the commission. Some of the key initiatives that we're gonna continue to focus on for the finance department is um hiring a treasurer and a staff accountant so that we're back up to that ten-person um team. We will be, once we have the treasurer position hired, we're currently training three brand-new employees in the department. And a lot of the duties that we're talking about have fallen to Rena Neal over the years, and she's been doing the work of three or four people. So once we get our controller um in, in the process and in the loop and trained up, and then we get a treasurer and do the same thing, the plan is for Rena to transition to the Director of Finance and then I'll step back into um Director of Human Resources and Risk Management. But we do need to get those duties taken off her plate before we can add any of the department head duties to, to her plate. Um so we'll work on that in twenty twenty-one. We're also going to work on um designing an RFP to go out for our enterprise resource system. Um our finance system, as you recall, is from the early nineties. Um and it works like software from the early nineties. It's very difficult to get any data out of and to analyze the data. It just takes hours of manipulation before you can get anything that's usable. We are uh working with the organization um to, to vote, to help um in the areas of focus for OEI with pay, benefits, workplace environment, performance evaluations, work hours, and budget. Not much different than every other department. Uh we have a representative on each of those committees to review those things and to make recommendations to administration to bring to the commission to discuss and and try to find ways that um we can be the employer of choice for our region. As you'll recall, um we did a um you, the commission approved the implementation of paymentis, um transferring our utility billing to paymentis, which provides a host of additional payment options for users as opposed to Click2Gov, which was just an online payment source. So that paymentis option allows people to use their Apple Pay, Google Pay, walk into Walmart and pay cash, and it will upload to our system within minutes. Um all types of additional payments, um and we're in the process of implementing that and hope to have that done next month. Um we're, we're running into a few um implementation roadblocks, but we're hoping to get those um taken care of and get that up and going um in February. Again, um staffing is gonna be a high priority for us. We just can't continue to put the amount of work onto limited resources that we have for the last two years. We've, we've been asked to get the twenty twenty audit done on time, and we're working with the Manhattan Housing Authority to make sure that their part of what we need for the audit is completed in time for us to meet that deadline as well. And then um obviously, coming soon, we'll be joining into the twenty twenty-two budget process and visiting with you guys more. Um but that is the overview of finance, and I would um go ahead and stand for questions on the finance department.
On the uh temporary staff that came to help, um are they, they're, they are temporary, we can't keep them?
Right, so um actually, it was a a trailing military spouse. And uh she returned to the area because her daughter wanted to graduate at Manhattan with her friends. And so she's literally only here through the end of May, and then we're gonna, she'll be moving back to where her spouse is.
So but it, with, without replacing anyone currently, we, that would put us down three?
It will put us down three, yes. So we'll actually end up, by the middle of the year, hiring another staff accountant. So, we'll actually end up, by the middle of the year, hiring another staff accountant.
Commissioner Haddas, I'm glad to see you're wearing down Rena's resistance to the department head position. And so, that's, that's good to hear.
Well, I have to tell you that once Rena saw the commitment from the commission and administration to make sure that the department was staffed properly and that there was support for moving those things along, that helped a lot. So, we appreciate that support from the commission administration because we were able to get a very valuable 18-year employee in that role. And I think it'll serve the organization really well. So, thank you.
On the, I forgot what it was called, but the, the enterprise system? But we don't have the price tag on that implementation, but it's, I think in previous discussions, it's been over a million.
Yeah, we're anticipating about 2 million, hopefully less. But anywhere between 1.2 and 2 million, just depending on the features and, obviously, the different APIs we need to set up with the softwares that we currently have that, for all the systems that are accepting payments around the city to be able to interface with that system as well so that that discontinues being a manual daily process for the finance team. Are there any other questions for the finance department piece?
So, for the human resources, resources department, we have spent an, a lot of time supporting the organization and the COVID response. We, in March, we got notification that there was gonna be a new federal law, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. And we had to have a policy ready and implemented by April 1st. There was, there was some leeway given by the federal government in getting that implemented, but I think it was like 30 days. So, human resources and legal worked hand-in-hand to get that policy ready to go. And we were able to train our employees and get it released, I believe, by the begin, by the very end of March. So, pretty quick turnaround there. In July, we started using the HealthCheck 360 symptom tracker. HealthCheck 360 is part of our wellness program already. So, it was already something our employees were familiar with. It's a secure platform for employees to be able to answer questions each day about symptoms and either get a red stop sign and not come into work and have to follow through on protocol or get a green sign and come into work and help provide a sense of safety and, and wellness for our workplace. I think that's worked really well for us in responding, especially as our community got a little bit more, an increase in community spread. It was able to help us keep our workplace safe and keep people home that needed to be home. We also, in 2020, implemented towards the end of the year, a long-term remote work policy to allow our employees to have more flexible work environment and to be able to, not much different than a lot of people. If you have something that you can pick up and take home with you, you can go home and work. And we, we started that in March 2020, that's a typo. As we were responding to COVID, we, if you recall, we closed down City, City Hall for a while. And, and so, our employees really kinda got tossed into remote work. But what we've learned is that it really has helped us increase productivity. Maybe to the detriment of some people's work-life balance, but it's helped us increase productivity overall because there's less interruptions, more dedicated time, which may be the opposite of what, what most people expect. But we found out that employees really like having that flexibility and would want to continue that. Remote work was one of our OEI initiatives before COVID even occurred. And so, one of the things that we thought, we need to really, as COVID kinda stretched out, we felt like we needed to implement a long-term policy. So, we added that policy, I believe it was October-ish timeframe. And people, our employees are required to have a remote work agreement in order to remote work on a long-term basis. And so, that's been working really well for us and has helped us keep our, our work environment safe and healthy and the added benefit of increasing employee morale. We're, as a department and an organization, we're still going through the Paylocity implementation. We transitioned from our, our Central Square I Series AS400, however you remember that system as, to Paylocity for the July 17th payroll. In August, for our August 28th payroll, we started using time and labor and we added in the community module. There's still several modules that we have yet to implement, one of which is performance evaluations, which will help us with one of our other OEI initiatives of getting that process more up to date. We've also implemented the benefits platform and used that for our 2021 open enrollment and had a lot of great comments from our employees about the ease of using that system. And we also transitioned our flexible benefits. So, our med, CAF and dependent care accounts from Trustmark to Paylocity. So, employees can see those accounts in Paylocity when they log in through the dashboard and can see their balances and see their claims. And people have really enjoyed that. One of the things we were able to do by making that transition was to get a debit card for employees for the, those accounts for approved spending. And people have loved to have that because they don't have to use their own money and then submit a claim and wait for, to get reimbursed. They just present the debit card, takes it directly out of that account. 2020 was a little iffy for risk management, but we came, we did really well with both our property insurance and our workers' compensation insurance renewals. They were anticipated to be much higher than they were. And I think we were, we were being told that the middle of the year, we could have a 20 to 40% increase in our property insurance. And I think we experienced about a 10% increase. Jason, do you remember that?
I think it was about 10%. So, we were really pleased to not be in those upper levels with other organizations, other municipalities that were getting the higher renewal rates. One of the ways that we believe we were able to do that is because we manage our insurance really well and we were able to keep our claims down by doing some of the stuff that, that needs repaired. When I think about like, if we have a fence that gets hit by a vehicle, sometimes we can repair the fence without having to, to file a claim and, and deal with those things. Workers' compensation, again, even though it was a, a highly stressful year for all of our employees, we did not experience a lot of workers' and workers' compensation claims. And we were told by our insured to expect to be, you know, at a 10 to 15% increase. And I don't think that our, I think we had a 2% or 3% increase on our workers' compensation rates for the year. So, overall, really well. That's a testament to the amount of work that we do to keep those, to manage those processes, which is done in human resources and risk management. But it does require a lot of, a lot of focus. So, for some of the, some of the things that I know some of you wanna know kind of what we're not getting done, some of the things that we're not able to focus on. If you see on our 2021 and 2022 key initiatives on the horizon, we've had our Personnel Policy Manual on this list, which is about 450 to 500 pages. And this year, in 2020, instead of reducing the amount of pages we had, we actually added to it. And we've already added to it for 2021 with another COVID policy for the organization. We're going to be, hopefully, going out with the RFP for the pay study this fall as soon as we can get that organized and published. And then, look back to what priorities we need to have. I'm looking forward to having a compensation expert kind of give us some recommendations on how we should attack the pay equity within the organization. You know, the fire department, Scott talked about negotiating with the union. We actually, our union does a really good job of like, taking a look at what their budgeted increase amount can be and, and finding the ways to make it work the most for their members. They have 80 members, Scott-ish?
72 for the fire union. And so, they, they have a little bit of a smaller group than we do with 415 employees. But they do a really good job of doing that. So, I'll be interested to see what that expert says about where we need to start. Is it at the top and come down because of compression at the top? Or is it at the bottom and coming up and then creating that compression all the way up? It'll be an interesting study for everybody to review. Again, focusing on supporting the organization with trying to help make changes in the areas of pay with the pay study benefits. And that's not always focused on our group health plan and the, the medical and dental benefits, but also benefits like paid time off. You know, we implemented parental leave, which has been a, a huge success for the organization. Different things like that, flexible work environment, that's a benefit. So, our remote work policy addressed that. And then, again, workplace environment, performance evaluation, work hours and budget. Some of the things that we haven't been able to do in 2020 that we were hoping to do and, and I, I get to sit through my evaluation and, and hear about not meeting my goal for the year is creating a supervisory training program so that supervisors understand how to handle all the aspects of being a supervisor in the organization. Additional employee training. We, we have been able to do training for COVID and the new COVID leave. And we're getting ready to do another training for COVID leave. But we've only been able to really focus on the immediate priorities, that fire that's already going, as opposed to working on the things that, that are constantly brewing and continue to create issues, which is making sure our supervisors understand all of our policies and how to work with their employees and coach them and hopefully be able to coach them instead of disciplining them and just helping them understand our policies and procedures. Some of the struggle with training supervisors is that a few of our policies and our disciplinary policy, they, they reference other policies and they contradict each other. So, really doing a new policy manual is gonna have to be a priority at some point for the organization to clean that up. Most organizations and municipalities our size have between 100 and 150 pages in their policy manual. I just wanna remind you, ours is between 450 and 500. And that's after you remove all the benefits, information that doesn't necessarily belong in a policy manual. We are also working to help the organization, as you're probably all aware and you talked about probably on Friday, as we start looking to increase activities for our parks and recreation department and start thinking about summer. We're gonna be bringing in between 100 and 200 seasonal employees, refilling all the gaps in departments that weren't filled in 2020. It's gonna be a busy year for human resources and the organization alike as we try to make sure that we're ready to fulfill all the needs and requests of the commission and the community. And with that, I would stand for any questions?
Hi Tammy, this is Commissioner Reddy. Nice job with both hats.
Thank you.
I do, I have a question. I know that a lot of policies need to, needed to be revised or had to come up with new policies due to COVID. How did the USD 383 hybrid model or going remote, how did that impact our, our employees? Since most of them, well, some of them have children that are that age and with the sick leave or family leave, whatever it is, were there accommodations made for those types of challenges at this time?
Yes. So, the federal leave actually protected, provided up to 480 hours of family medical leave, emergency family medical leave for employees that had children, that their childcare or school was closed due to a COVID reason. And the hybrid model, as we came back in August, was a covered reason for the leave. We, we did a survey in June or July, and I think we had about 15 or 20 employees identified that were gonna have children that were participating in the hybrid model. So, we asked those employees to work with their supervisors and let them know what they were able to do as far as when, what, which group their child got placed in, A or B, and then determine what, what their need was for that emergency FMLA. Wednesday, everybody was covered. Some people were covered Monday, Tuesday, the other people were covered Thursday, Friday. And so, we just had to figure that out. Employees had, had the emergency family medical leave. I believe we only had one employee that maxed that out. Most of our employees were hovering about 100 or so of the 480 hours. And so, we, I think that's a testament to how much people wanted to be able to continue to work or remote work if they were able to, even though they had those other conflicts.
I just asked that because this was not in their control. And it's, it's not like a death in the family or anything like that. And if, if a, a student or a teacher or staff member tested positive, then all of them may have had to quarantine. And I just wanted to make sure that, that was taken care of and not held against them at any level as far as not only compensation, but how they use those leave, documented leave items.
So, for 2020, that leave was protected. In 2021, the city's adopted a policy that's a hybrid of that federal leave, but it's no longer federally protected leave. It's just an optional leave that the city is going to offer employees to continue to recognize that we're still seeing the impacts of COVID in our community and in the region. And so, we, similar to the federal leave, will have an like, emergency paid sick leave for the employee if they were to be test positive or quarantined or a family member that they live with or said they need to provide care for someone who's sick or quarantined. And then, again, that same childcare or school closure leave at the same two-thirds rate for, as the federal leave. The, the sick leave is at 100% and then the childcare leave is at the two-thirds rate. So, we're doing, we're doing as much as we can to ensure that employees, we're keeping our workplace safe by encouraging people to stay home when they need to, when they're ill. And then, also, you know, trying to help them by not creating a financial situation for them as well. You're welcome.
I remember the city was having a program for employees at the zoo. And I wondered how that went. Scott's not here and I just thought I would ask you financially, because it's a benefit for employees.
So, we actually did the Learning Academy for city employees, kids. We did an in-city auditorium.
Okay.
We, I think our maximum a day was like six or seven kids, Eddie? Eddie? How, how many kids were maxed at the Educational Learning Academy?
The most I believe that we had at one time was five or six. And that wasn't on an everyday basis, that was on an intermittent basis. We had as few some days as one or two.
Okay.
So, we, we discontinued that program just based on the cost benefit. It was a benefit to employees, but they, we gave them enough time to, to find alternative means of care. And then, we discontinued the program. So, we gave them some time to get alternate arrangements made.
I just knew you were trying it, but I never heard any follow-up. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Glad to know. Are you looking at any other benefits that you don't? Are you looking at any other benefits that you don't currently offer?
Dennis is actually the liaison, and I don't sit on that committee. I sit on a couple other ones. I think there are some other things that we're exploring to 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 improve the employee experience as well.
Okay.
All all follow-up like Dennis comes up, the one one that kind of comes and goes is the dealing with military leave or anything around that. Can you just touch on what we already have or what we could potentially look at doing for those reservists or National Guard members, whoever they might be?
Yeah, so military leave is required. And so I don't have that policy memorized, but we do offer unpaid military leave for any of our service members and a leave of absence for when they go on their thirty-day duty. We maintain and will maintain their service ten tenure. We maintain their dates of service, so we don't create a break in their employment.
And to go back, this is Dennis Marstel, Assistant City Manager. To your question, Commissioner Morse, when we're looking at benefits, there's a wide variety that we're looking at. There's a work team internally through our OEI. And a lot of that is centered around, how do we look at where a person is in their stage in unemployment or stage in life? If you're a new college graduate versus someone who's been in the workforce a little bit longer, what are the benefits that may be more attractive based upon where you are coming into working for the city of Manhattan? And so some of that can be potentially front-loading, simple as front-loading in vacation time instead of earning or accruing it over time. Some of it could be looking at, is there some type of financial assistance we can give for student loans? Is there some type of additional benefit we can give for a 401K match? We do have our retirement program through the state, but even thinking about how we look at paid time off in general, in that type of structure, it may be more appealing for people when they come in just to have a bulk or bank of time versus earning it over a period of years. And so all these are different benefit concepts that we've been looking at. We do have a very healthy tuition reimbursement program. Trying to maybe see how we promote that or utilize that a little bit better. Even there's interest amongst the employees. How can we use the workforce of four hundred and fifty employees to maybe get some group benefits or group discounts somewhere? So all these ideas have been out there and are under consideration. And as we go forward and think about our benefits package for more for twenty-two, then we'll be working on those through the course of twenty-one.
Of course, okay.
I was gonna follow up on O'Erin's question here on military leave. I think we got a letter from, I think the fire union, and they wanted paid military leave. I think I think that's interesting to look at. I I don't know if that makes sense. I mean, I know some employers pay the difference, like if you if you're making less money when they call you on active duty, they they make up the difference. They don't lose pay, but I'm not so sure of double dipping. But that was a request we got, so just to put that in context.
Jason Hilders, Deputy City Manager, it it has come up in our union negotiations. There's there's a lot more detail that we could share with you all at some point. It will likely come up again. Some of the specifics and things to consider, the drive time for folks to report. Some compensate for that. So there there are things, the drive time on the way back, just the the period of time where you're transitioning to go to work and then when you're coming back. So we've looked at it. It's obviously something we'll consider as we move forward. But I do think it's something that, within that negotiation, we're obviously a lot of give and take. And it was something we looked at last time. It'll come up again, and we'll consider that as well.
Thanks. I just wanted to be sure it was in context, because I know that's a little bit more complicated than just saying yes, no.
Commissioner City Manager Fear, I just wanted to tell Tammy how appreciative we are of of wearing two hats. She's done great work in that regard. And so a little good news to share from the sacrifice and cuts that that folks made. I think you recall at budget time last year, we told you that two thousand and twenty-one was an extra pay period year, and we elected not to budget for that in order to keep things low. Happy to report that because of our savings, we were able to take care of that in two thousand and twenty. So that's not a item we'll face this year. Thanks, Tammy.
So so the carryover, the money's already been taken out, and we still got six million bucks to carry over?
Yes.
Very cool.
Tammy, just to say, I I know there's a whole team and Rena and all of you, but it's a relief to have the two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen budgets packed up and put on the shelf and so that we can now focus on the two thousand and twenty, which is now's the right time to to look at that. So it's a comfort to have that caught up. And I know low staffing was the issue, so I'm glad to have us caught up.
Thank you. With that, I'll introduce Katie Jackson, our city attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Katie Jackson, City Attorney. I will start off by reviewing two thousand and twenty. As the other departments have indicated, it was really dominated by COVID projects. I provided, as the other departments did, a list of our two thousand and twenty accomplishments as part of your packet, and it's a long list. And I hope you had an opportunity to review it for all the departments, but also for legal, because one thing that's difficult for legal to show is the work that we do on all the different projects, programs and efforts that you're hearing about tonight. It's not just our own efforts or programs, it's everything or or most things that these departments do. We might have a small to a medium to a very large role in that workload. As a reminder, the legal department is two departments, or sorry, two divisions. The City Attorney's Office, which provides general counsel to the municipality, the civil side, and then the municipal court. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about both from a two thousand and twenty perspective. In two thousand and twenty, aside from the pandemic, we did have to maintain a lot of the normal operations of the city. I'm sure all the departments could tell you that even though COVID dominated what we did, we still had employee issues and budget issues, and we had other operations that were normal for our departments that we had to sustain, and we were able to do that in both of our departments. The City Attorney's Office produced more than one thousand one hundred legal deliverables. Those are actual documents that we produced or reviewed for the organization. In addition to that, we attended all kinds of meetings that we don't count in that. We don't count most of our emails. We also don't include our service on committees, which include the diversion Diversity Inclusion Committee, the Strategic Plan Committee, the IT Committee, and a lot of the other internal efforts. So we do have a role in those, which we really appreciate having a voice in those, but of course, that takes more time. The court, the court side, they had three thousand seven hundred and fifty traffic offense, traffic misdemeanor and code cases, five thousand eight hundred and fifteen parking cases. These numbers are lower than a typical year, of course, because enforcement slowed down due to COVID. But I want to say that the court, I'd like to emphasize that the court's business did not really slow down. They undertook a really important project for the community this year. That project was, as part of our Sparks funding, putting in the technology to allow for remote attendance at court. It was a fairly significant project from a technology perspective, but I want to tell you some really important benefits to the entire community of that. We only prosecute what you'd probably consider the minor crimes more. So these aren't, these aren't the offenses that are have the same kind of serious nature that you read about in the paper, but they're important to the individuals who who go through our system. Oftentimes, when we have court, a defendant has to take off a half-day of work because the way that they had to appear was they had to come and check in at arraignment and sit and wait till they were called. Having remote attendance has allowed us to schedule them at individual times, and we have individuals who are appearing in court by just taking their fifteen-minute break at work, logging in on their cell phone. They have no no penalty at work. We have long had defendants who had to bring their children to court because of lack of childcare. That issue has also been abated by remote court. We've had defendants who are out of town, who get deployed or sent to another, get stationed elsewhere, and they either have to travel back for court in the past, and now they aren't doing that. We've had compliments from both defendants and actually the attorneys in the communities in this community about how remote court has saved time and money and really benefited everyone. So remote court, the one aspect of the project that was Sparks-funded was to to actually install the technology, then to learn how to use it, but then also we had to change some policies and procedures in order to have remote court. It's not as simple as saying everyone log in. You have to have certain court procedures in in place to do that. So although our our caseload might have been lower at the municipal court, we had an entire new field of court services to provide to the community. And during this time, we also increased our online payments. We reduced the fees for that so that we incentivized incentivized people to pay online instead of coming into the building. So we had a lot of back, like kind of background work to do these, to do even while the normal court numbers were down. In addition, we've long had a project of trying to clean out the old jail. So we all know that old jail is something that we talk about every couple of years about what to do with it. Well, it does have the court storage of our files, and you're actually required to keep court files forever. So we have had an ongoing project of scanning a certain number of those files so that we can get rid of the physical boxes, so that the old jail, whenever the city decides, you know, the future of the old jail, that our boxes aren't part of the problem. We were able to have our parking control officers, who were not enforcing parking during the shutdown, they actually did a lot of the scanning and and removal of the boxes. So we offset sort of future expenses for document scanning by having them do that during this time. So we were able to to make progress there as well. We did just a little bit of preventive law this year. We did some in-house training for board liaisons on Koma and Quora, and we did a couple of policies, and that was kind of the two thousand and twenty. In two thousand and twenty-one, again, I I would refer you to the comments of my colleagues in the room as far as the key priorities and initiatives. Their priorities and initiatives are ours. Your priorities and initiatives are ours. We serve the rest of this organization. So as the, as you add staff to accomplish the things that we want to revisit and renew, it takes attorneys to do the work. So we can't just, if we staff up one department to get something launched, sometimes you need to staff up the attorneys as well in order to have that continue on the schedule that you want it to do. Some of our other priorities that I'll talk a little bit more is, we are frequently asked to do training of staff and officials. And Tammy Galvane talked about the training needs that she's been asked to provide, but the legal department is also asked to to provide training, and we simply haven't had the time to do much training. And it would really help our employees and our officials to have a better understanding of the laws and our policies and procedures, and it really also helps prevent future problems. That's the whole point of preventive law. From a court perspective, we have some, in two thousand and twenty-one, we do have some succession issues with some, a couple of long-term employees who have indicated that they're gonna retire. We are gonna do some reorganizing, and then one of our goals is to maintain and update our court management system. Our court management system is a, the Tyler Technology System. It is, in the next year, our, we're going to have to decide whether we're gonna continue with them or something new. But I would just like to emphasize that courts need the right technology to provide their services. Courts are often, you know, considered essential services in the same way as some of our other very important services, but they are essential to the community. And our court having the ability to perform its services is critical to what the city does. Our future issues and challenges are one of our biggest things. We just, we have small staff. And I'm gonna talk about that a little more on the next slide. But legal work and the city's work have grown incredibly in demand and complexity, and we have not increased legal staff in response. We just haven't. So that is an incredible challenge. It does slow down all kinds of things that people would like to see done. Of those eleven hundred legal legal deliverables we performed this year, they came from more than fifty different city employees and city officials. So what we get on a daily, weekly basis is just requests for work. And there's not a system right now for us to prioritize among the work or to plan for it because we we haven't had that in place, which is one reason that we've been such proponents of the strategic plan, because we think that we would be able to serve the organization more effectively and efficiently if there were some priorities and some some planning of those efforts. But right now, it just comes in whenever people want that done, and we are in the, we have the task of trying to weigh everything and determine what we can schedule and when based upon the the different departments' needs. So that's always part of our our future issues and challenges. And then recruitment and retention of employees, the OEI efforts are something that we would like to see continued. So segueing to our budget constraints. So the City Attorney's Office needs to add an attorney. It was budgeted in two thousand and twenty, but it's part of the savings of this year, and it was cut from two thousand and twenty-one. And I I presented this information to you about the City Attorney's Office last July at our budget meeting, but we have been at our budgeted staffing level only three of the last nine years, from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and twenty. Our current staffing level is the same as the two thousand and twelve budgeted personnel when the City Attorney's Office became a full-time city division. I actually have a typo on that next line, which I'm kind of glad, because it allows me to point it out. We're two employees less than the two thousand and twelve national average of six employees of cities our size with our services. Two thousand and twelve, not two thousand and eighteen. We're really just at a at a point where it's just sort of a desperate need for services. Tammy also talked about things like the personnel policy. And that's an effort that when Tammy became Director of Human Resources, that she and I tried to tackle. Why does the personnel policy matter to Tammy and I? Well, prior to Tammy's holding the position, we recognized that the personnel policy has a lot of some legal flaws and some inconsistencies that were problematic because they become legal issues. We didn't go through the policy one day and try to spot them. It resulted from disputes. We are aware these problems exist. We have legal disputes because of them when we could simply fix the policies and update them, and we would prevent those problems from arising. Let's see, I want to make sure I cover. On the court side, I want to emphasize that we need to maintain our existing staff. Our department with both divisions is usually around fifteen employees. The, prior to two thousand and twenty, we had had a hundred percent retention for like two or three years. I mean, nobody had left. This was great. I was so proud of this. In two thousand and twenty, we've had four people quit out of fifteen. Now fortunately, they didn't all quit at the same time, so we only had one vacancy at a time in the department. But that is a stark difference for our department, going from no one quitting for years to four in a in a department of fifteen. So what we would really like to do from the court perspective is to maintain our staff or even consider adding a part-time clerical staff. Just like the City Attorney's Office, the court staff has not increased in size to reflect the the changes in the community. They are such a dedicated, long-serving staff that they can do a lot with few people. But the strain of COVID has been incredible on them and the rest of our department. We have had, we actually have a time now, we have three staff who are out due to COVID. And so I can only tell you the challenge, the personal and professional challenge it has been for us to cover those three positions. What happens is someone from the City Attorney's Office helps in some way. I stepped in when, with prior absences, I've had a Wes, our Assistant City Attorney Wes stepped in for the prosecutors. Well, that means the other city attorney's work doesn't get done, because we have to provide this court service. So we would, we want to emphasize that there's their numbers cannot decrease. If they could add a part-time clerical staff, that would help alleviate some of the the backup that they get the backlog on, their scanning and filing and their entry. We have a lot of clerical responsibilities at the court that relate to inputting cases into the the state and federal systems. So there, and even to the driver's license systems, every case that comes through has extra work that we're required to do. We have to send a portion of every case in our state court costs. We have to account for it to six different places. So there's a lot of just clerical work that goes along with running a court, and we'd like to continue to maintain that or increase it a little bit so that our staff aren't under such a strain. The last thing that I would like to emphasize again is that the the budget constraints, probably one of the biggest impacts to the city as an organization, is that we haven't been able to practice that preventive law. Again, that doesn't sound like something very exciting or important, and it's easy to push it down the priority list because nobody's demanding it. But the reason preventive law is important is because it prevents the problems. And I'm talking about not only training staff about their legal responsibilities, but also reviewing and updating our outdated ordinances, resolutions and policies. On a daily basis, the legal issues that we are dealing with are simply because somebody doesn't know that an ordinance, resolution or policy even exists, or they didn't follow it. And that's really, that's a problem that we can solve if we have the time. We just need to update those things and educate our staff, and it would We just need to update those things and educate our staff, and it would really help our staff not feel like they're always dealing, like Tammy said, kind of putting out the fires. It would be that we can provide our services without feeling like we have an emergency arise every day. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Katie. This is Commissioner Ready. I think that's the bright spot with COVID was the remote transition because it was always, we always knew it was a challenge for several populations to make it to court for one reason or another, childcare, job, whatever it is. So I'm glad that that pushed us to where we had to have that, and there was CARES money to make sure we updated that system that needed to be updated. And I agree with you. I think we actually take the legal department much more for granted because you are so behind the scenes, except every single ordinance that comes in front of us, legal helped develop and put in place, and also revisiting the old policies like Tammy had suggested would probably be better for us in the long run. I appreciate your presentation, and I think, I'm glad we do this because this is stuff we don't typically hear from legal especially. So thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Estherbrook, the staff that, the four that had gone, they've all been, those positions have been filled?
We have one vacancy.
One vacancy?
Yes.
And the courthouse, those guys got through everything, or I mean, the old jail?
Oh, no.
No, okay, so there's still more files to scan?
Yes, they have decades of boxes there. They might have gotten through like a decade and a half, but we really have almost all the records of the court. We actually do have a few in the basement here, the old docket books, which you're still required to keep. They're these huge leather-bound notebooks, but no, we have decades. I could get you the number, the years we went through, but...
That's okay.
We made good progress in the time we had. We're proud of that.
I also wanted to say, everything that we've done in the last year since I've been on the commission seems, or since the pandemic, seems to have really put pressure on new limits and what things are, and I just, I know that probably all of us, but I've definitely reached out to you and your offices to ask those questions. I can't imagine what the city staff was all trying to figure out as well. And so just thank you and Wes and everyone on your staff for being flexible and trying to find the, help us find the right ground to be on.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, Katie is really good about showing all new commissioners the jail and the boxes, and I appreciate the need to reduce those, and that's a labor that, you know, it's a fill-in kind of thing, but hopefully as you have people with a little bit of time, and COVID might have given them some parking, less parking responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, I can introduce Rob Ah, our Director of Public Works.
Hold that thought, Rob. Is there any reason that the previous presenters need to stay around? They've got lives they could get back to probably. I don't think, if anybody has questions for the first five or six department heads, does anybody feel the need to keep them here?
I don't. Good suggestion.
I was just wondering who was keeping track because Eddie had the longest presentation last year, so.
That's part of the camaraderie, but, you know, it's up to them. We asked them to kind of stick around and, obviously, we didn't draw straws who was going first, but if they, I'll leave it up to them whether they want to stay or not.
We won't hold it against you if you leave because I think you should, so, okay.
Jesse, because he normally goes last, so he can jump out.
You all set? Okay. Evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Rob Ah, Director of Public Works. I've got just three short slides to run through this evening for you. Starting off, I'd like to highlight a number of projects and accomplishments that the current 121 employees in the Public Works Department accomplished in 2020. Like many of the departments that presented prior to me, we are fortunate to have staff members that work extremely hard, provide critical infrastructure services to the community for water, wastewater, stormwater, and transportation. I have a wide range of employees, engineers, scientists, scientists with PhDs. I also have a large labor force that can't frankly work remotely. Water mains don't get fixed by typing on keyboards. Traffic signals don't get fixed either that way. But that labor force has a don't quit attitude. For those of you that have been in the military know what I'm talking about. They work no matter what the weather conditions are. Some of them worked late last night. Some of them will work again tonight depending if the forecasters get anything right. And they don't quit until the job is completed, and they are all and each very critical in the accomplishments, not only in 2020, but also in the past for providing those services to the community. So I'd like to start off with kind of the first bullet, and that's the pavement management. We did accomplish a number of projects in 2020 with contractors and our city crews as well. In March of 2021, I'm coming back to you all in a work session, provide an update with more details and more facts and figures, so I'm not going to go into a ton of things And we repaired, you know, in the program, we're going to highlight what subdivisions that we're going to try and tackle in 2021. One thing I do want to point out is that in 2020, we did not spend very much special street and highway funds. That's the gas tax. We held those funds back because of fears of loss of revenue and the sales tax in order to have cash to pay employees. The good news is that cash from the gas tax rolls over. We didn't lose it. I was very much in your camp. There's all sorts of concerns in the beginning, what was going to be the dip in property tax, what was going to be the dip in sales tax. So when I do present in March, you're going to see not a lot of money was spent out of the gas tax, but it wasn't lost. And obviously, Ron's already reported on the carryover from sacrifices, not only from my department, but from every department. So I talked about the rollover. Despite the pandemic and at time only working half of the crews, as we learned more about how to battle the virus, our crews did pour over 2,000 cubic yards of concrete this year. They repaired over 14,000 potholes, installed 875 tons of asphalt, and our spring cleanup was one of the highest years in terms of collection in the history of the program. We do intend to provide that service again here in 2021, basically the last week in March for the community. Transportation projects, kind of the next large, several projects. North Campus Corridor, Kimball and College at RONER is already highlighted. The Juliet Brick Project, the final phase up to Points. Kirkwood Drive Extension, which is nearing completion. Ron's already highlighted North Manhattan Phase 3B, and we've started a number of studies. We've presented some to you. Grandmere Roundabout at Kimball, we've presented to you all and those concepts. We also want to point out that the construction of roughly 4.7 new lane miles have been added to public streets in 2020. That was either through widening like North Campus or Kirkwood or new subdivisions. Contractors constructed nearly 8,894 lineal feet of five-foot-wide sidewalk, as well as 8,732 lineal feet of eight-foot-wide trail. Now, Commissioner Estherbrook, you and I had some discussions a couple of years ago, you know, and some of your colleagues, and when you were campaigning, and those are the types of numbers that sometimes get lost that you don't see. Well, you only spent 2%. Well, that's not necessarily true. I just wanted to kind of highlight, you know, it's not just motorized vehicles that we're trying to accommodate, it's definitely pedestrians and bicyclists as well. In the report, in the eight pages of accomplishments for Public Works, I highlighted a number of, I think we had over 170-some new ADA ramps are also installed. So it's definitely multimodal, and sometimes it gets lost in all the big numbers. Stormwater projects, we started one of the more major projects in the downtown East watershed, which is six in Houston. We have it on kind of winter break. That project's not completed. We still need to cross Points Avenue, get to the north side. I know Commissioner Morris, he always is excited when there are stormwater projects. It's certainly one of the major ones that came out of that east side study. Some of you remember the dollar amounts, you know, being in the 70s or 80 million of the 14 different projects. Westwood Storm Sewer has started. The Rosen Cutter reinforced concrete box or wooden box replacement will probably start here in the next two to three weeks. Smith and Manvax Channel is well underway and is nearing completion. The Levy has definitely dominated our discussions for years, literally years. I think that project and the feasibility study started, it was like the second month I was here back in 2005, and we're finally getting into detailed plans. Right-of-way acquisition, we've discussed and formulated a plan for funding it, and there's more to come in 2021 for action. But I do thank you for that support. That project will rehab and structurally improve a feature that protects well over billions of dollars of downtown assets, heart of our economic center for the community, and upgrade that system and increase the reliability. Water and wastewater included the completion of master plans and the water emergency plans as required by the EPA. Projects like Sunny Slope Sanitary Sewer Location was completed, as well as up in Northview, the Nutmeg Water Main. We also replaced the street at the same time. You're going to see in 2021, when I present in March, there's some other waterline projects coming up in Northview, as well as College Heights, and we're working on Anderson Avenue, a design that probably won't go to bid until late this year, if not next year, from Connecticut all the way to Sunset to deal with that aging and deteriorating waterline. I think you all are sick and tired of the water main breaks on that segment of roadway and also how rough the road is. Again, we tried to coordinate, you know, Randy DeWitt, my Assistant Director for Utilities, and Brian Johnson, City Engineer, worked very hard, worked very well together in trying to coordinate and do as much infrastructure on segments as possible one time, and that's, those are some examples that are becoming this year, as well as possibly in 2022. The most significant improvements, let's see here, in biosolvement has been to purchase the real estate of the additional land. All of you were supportive of that, and I greatly appreciate it. So does my staff. We switched contractor farmers. We had an excellent year in production. We generated a revenue of net of $134,082. The previous highest year was back in 2010 at $64,873. So we basically doubled what, you know, any previous record we had set. Also created more flexibility for staff to rotate crops, rest land, and so forth. So I appreciate the support in purchasing that land, and it was certainly successful this year. As always, rainfall and weather conditions certainly play into those outputs, but I do appreciate the support of the land. Water Treatment Plant produced roughly 2.3 billion gallons of drinking water. Our water loss, you know, the mayor always kind of asked me, what's our water loss? I will just tell you that this is actually unaccounted for water, it was 9%, so we were less than 10% in terms of unaccounted water, in terms of what went through the plant, what water meters were. Obviously, we always try to estimate water main breaks and anything else. Water Meter Cruise, there's lots of numbers in the eight pages of accomplishments in terms of turn-ons, turn-offs, water meter repairs, meter replacements. We had roughly 93 new water services, as well as 37 water main breaks in the community. Our wastewater treatment plant accomplished 97% removal of bio-oxygen demand, as well as total suspended solids from raw sewage that came into the wastewater treatment plant. They treated roughly 2 billion gallons of raw sewage, and they applied 16 million gallons of bio-solids to our farms for crop production. Because we had such a great yield this year, it allows us to apply more. It doesn't require us to hold on to those bio-solids. And again, that's why I say thank you for the purchases because it certainly has created greater flexibility and has, and at the time appears to have solved some of the problems that we've had in the past. But most importantly, we did not have any major interruptions of critical infrastructure services during the pandemic of 2020. If we couldn't have delivered water, we had to boil water, there's already a toilet paper shortage, you know, I think that would have been, that would just added to the chaos. Very happy and very pleased with my staff that took precautions, changed their lifestyle, just like all the other departments, additional cleaning procedures and so on and so forth in order to have no interruptions in services. All right, so what is on the horizon? I don't think anything on this list is a surprise to any of you. North Campus Corridor and the Aggieville Projects and the Levy Rehab are going to dominate 2021 for me and my staff, and not just my staff, other departments as well. Katie talked about all the services that she provides. She's critical to me and my department, and whether it's easement acquisition, contract review, there's a whole number of things that the legal department provides for us, even occasional disputes with contractors and so forth. Rainy's got some projects up there in terms of sanitary sewer relief, upgraded pump stations, and so forth. As identified in the CIP in 2020, there's a number of projects we're going to try and get moving again, you know, specifically the Ata Bus, the pedestrian improvements along Fremont at 14th Street and North Manhattan and 12th Street. 12th Street will also include a new bus shelter. There is also a grant from ATA that we see, that they received for the 600 block of Points Avenue to create some traffic calming for Points Avenue, as well as install two new bus shelters. Then those projects play into the timing, the design, and hopefully the construction in 2022. The intersection of Juliet and Points, new traffic signal on that aging signal there, as well as ADA ramp improvements, pedestrian improvements. And then from that, it creates a catalyst, hopefully, that continues to set the stage for us to apply for a grant and complete the improvements on Juliet Avenue, south of Points Avenue, down through Pierre Intersection. Some of you remember the temporary lines that we painted down at Pierre and Juliet and so forth, next to the Catholic school and the church down there. Those are improvements that we'd like to make more permanent. We think it'd be a good KDOT grant, but again, all these projects are interplayed and so forth.
While you're there, Rob, we hear pretty regularly from a woman whose grandchild is picked up and dropped off in front of the Seven Dollar School, and it hasn't rained, so there's been no puddle lately much, but keeps asking when that can be. Is that part of the improvement that you're eventually working on, is kind, you'll be able to level that out?
Yep, absolutely. So just like everything that we did between Blumau, Points, our staff, Karen Becker, Michael, Brooke, and our survey team, I mean, we addressed not only, not only the rehab of the street, we adjusted the curb lines so that stormwater had the proper grade. We sized storm inlets, we replaced a 100-year-old water line, just, you know, so on and so forth. We will want to do and take that comprehensive look of Juliet from Points Avenue down through the Pierre Intersection and hopefully address and...
I think this is going to be across the street, south from the Pierre Intersection. But anyway, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, as you always know, we have to end projects somewhere, and perhaps if we, what's the intersection, south Pierre, not Yuma? Is that too far south?
It's just...
Colorado, so Colorado, we'll have to transition somewhere.
Just barely south of Pierre. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, typically, the alleys in the Ward District are the high point, and then the alleys are graded and sloped towards the intersections, which are supposed to have storm inlets, and as you know, that neck of woods doesn't always have very many storm inlets. All right. One of the highest priorities, projects for Public Works, a lot of you have already talked about OEI, and thank you for that support, and thank you to City Manager's Office for pushing that and being supportive of our employees. For us, it's, in Public Works, it's the joint maintenance facility. We have lots of work to complete, yet with zoning coming up here, I believe we go to the Planning Board next Monday, and then we'll be before you very soon for zoning and annexation. I still need to bring forward the final guarantee maximum price for our contractor, as well... as well as the improvements to the intersection of US 24 and Levy Drive. So lots of work to be done yet there and we'll continue to move forward on those and work with our friends at KDOT as well as our contractor and architect. Last two weeks, we've had some really great detailed design discussions with our architect and our crews. And I don't know, I think Eddie, I think we're really starting to see some ownership. We're trying to get down to supervisors. What is it you need to be efficient? What don't you have now? What is the most economical? What is the best value? And those are some of the discussions that we're having. Right. And always, you know, we always put up here the whole meet permit requirements of KDHE for water, wastewater and stormwater. That's a real simple sentence. Get in a lot of trouble if we don't do it. And I got a lot of dedicated staff, so we'll meet our obligations to operate our utilities within the rules and regulations of state and federal government, that being our drinking water, the wastewater and stormwater, our stormwater discharge as well as traffic operations and conformance with the federal manual uniform traffic control devices. Challenges for 2022. I, I know, I already know that there's not going to be enough to go around between the various departments. That's very simple. I've got listed up there some needs obviously for myself. However, I'm very much concerned about not only my department, but support from legal. Rena and Tammy are probably tired of me talking about our financial software. I see a lot of time wasted unfortunately because the softwares don't communicate. The AS 400 doesn't communicate with the CIP software and our forecast software, we try and it's really just spreadsheets that pulls, doesn't even pulls data. All has to be manually entered from those two other softwares. And I see a lot of time wasted unfortunately by her staff and my staff to try and keep all those things updated. And those are, those are big goals and discussions we'll have to have in 2022. I'm not going to sugarcoat it. I have some concerns just about, especially on the traffic side and pavement markings. I think we can do a better job in the community in terms of pavement markings. We've added, we keep adding more and more crosswalks. We add more pedestrian, not against those, I'm just concerned that we're not keeping those markings to a quality that they should be. We haven't added a lot of staff in that department. And again, those are going to be the challenges in the 2022 cycle in balancing all the different departments. My commitment honestly is, you know, what is right for the organization as a whole and so forth. We may have to kick the can on some of those things. I do know some of the other departments are concerned about our vehicle CIP program. Some things get to the point of failure before they get replaced. That's not a good policy. That's not good preventative maintenance. Probably the other last item that kind of came before us, and I think Eddie's going to talk about it when he comes up here, and that's vegetation management. You know, the City Manager's Office has really gone to Eddie and asked for cuts in what can be removed from their workload that's either an operational cost and so forth. In the past, the last 15 years that I've worked for the city, anything that was green, Parks and Recs cut, their staff cut it, whether that's our Marla ditch, waterway, or so forth. And I was told late in 2020 that Public Works is going to have to pick up that workload. And, and what it means in 2021, which is not budgeted, if you were to take a value of the amount of work that Park and Rec does and you were to translate it to bids that we've received in the past, as if I had to hire a contractor to mow a grass at a certain frequency for a certain acreage, it's about a $300,000 hit. That's the value that Park and Rec provided to Public Works. And it was everything from our water wells, our, our pump stations for water, our lift stations for sanitary sewer. There's actually quite a bit, probably two-thirds of it is stormwater. I mentioned a Marla ditch being one of the largest areas that needs to be mowed on a frequency. There's the detention ponds just north of IHOP that need to be mowed at a certain frequency. Because of the constrictions in hiring staff and the cuts that A's been made, asked the maid make, that's, that's not possible. So that's going to be one of my challenges in 2021 and we'll probably talk about it for the 22 budget as well. So with that, I may be giving Eddie a run for his windbag award since he's a seven-time grand champion. These, these are definitely other projects that are out there and so forth, and I'll just kind of leave them up there on the slide. What I will tell you is that in 2020, we paid contractors roughly 26 million in construction dollars. For 2021, in visiting with Brian and Randy, we're probably staring at almost 60 million in construction contracts for 2021. You look at the levy, you look at everything in North Campus, you look at everything in Aggieville, joint maintenance facility, so on and so forth. It's a significant workload. I didn't double my inspection staff for 2021. Those are my concerns. The last thing I want to talk about, I think Commissioner Reddy had asked at the, at the retreat on Friday, what were some of the impacts fiscally from some of the constraints? So I'm just going to, got some quick handwritten notes here. For us, some of the constraints of 2020, we were four people short pretty much the entire time in the street. That is 25% of our labor force for repairing streets, spring cleanup, snow and ice operations, storm cleanup after significant rainstorms, they help out the stormwater crew, clean out inlets. So we were, we were short probably 25% of our labor force in, in our street division. Our utilities division was very much a revolving door. I heard a number of different departments talk about retention of employees, have very inexperienced equipment operators right now and laborers in our utilities division, the folks that repair Water Main breaks. I sat in on two different exit interviews, low pay and high work hours were some of the complaints. I can go work less hours and make basically the same thing. So that's going to continue to be a challenge for that division and what is expected in terms of on-call and responsiveness. Other things, I already talked about the gas tax and we delayed the Kimball Avenue project from K-113 to Candlewood. However, that funding wasn't lost. I talked already about the vegetation control. We delayed purchases of our intelligent transportation equipment for traffic signals. There was at times our network was not communicating. I ended up going to City Manager's Office early fall and say, okay, we're, we need to spend money, I need to buy components. My staff Frankensteined together as many components as they could with their soldering gun and, and different pieces and parts. And we really delayed, you know, some of those repairs. Thankfully, the sales tax was what it was. We have to carry over where we're at and we're still able to make some of those purchases. But that was how we were operating in 2020. We were, we're allowing things to get to the point of failure because we were so concerned about making sure we had money to pay salaries and keep critical operations up and running. Eric also, I think, mentioned in his presentation a little bit about travel and certifications. Almost all of us engineers as well as our operators at the water, the wastewater treatment plant, our environmental staff, even myself, I'm short hours. Part of that is because conferences weren't available to get my professional development hours. So we'll have to find some solutions here in 2021. And with that, I've talked way too long. Mayor, Commissioner, is there any questions?
This is Commissioner Reddy. Thank you, Rob. You did a very thorough job. We'll be on the three slides you provided. There was a lot of material and I, I think we've seen construction projects all over the place, which is extremely important. I just had a question and it's a very minor, minor issue. On Kimball, I think across from maybe College Hill, I'm not sure, the line is kind of crooked and I don't know why. I, I don't know if that's on us or what happened there. And I don't know, you, you probably know, but I'm not sure why.
It's a, it's a temporary pavement marking line because you get a lane, a through lane shift. We don't have, obviously it's not permanent. It's still temporary traffic control. Contractor probably frankly laid it by hand without a machine, probably somebody with the rule in his hand.
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
Walking backwards, I, I will tell you the final and permanent will be done by a machine and that's what's in the specifications. I can visit with Brian, perhaps it needs to be touched up. This is a tough time of year to get anything to stick.
No, it's, it's not a big deal. I, like I said, and I think one of the things the community also needs to recognize is the millions of dollars in contracts of construction. You said 26 million and 2021, 61 million. And that's a lot of money that comes into the community and into our businesses and developers and construction and everything else that's going on. And it does take its toll, I'm sure, on your department. These are just things we see, but all the underground work and everything else that goes into it. When you have a safe community, it looks almost boring, just the way it should because there's no drama, because everything's running smoothly like it should. And that falls on you and your staff. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner, have a thought for a second. So the gas tax money that you didn't spend in 2020 to go roll forward into 2021, is that street maintenance or what's that earmarked for?
Yep, it, it is. It's, it's earmarked for street maintenance. So the first, the first big rock I need to put into the glass bowl is Kimball Avenue. We're going to bid out K-113 or Seth Child West through Candlewood. Those improvements, there's improvements not only in terms of safety to address some crash patterns with the existing entrance at Dara's. There's a benefit district for a, a new driveway. There's a median, there's stormwater that'll go underground. There's a 10-foot wide trail that'll be added to the north side. And we're also on the stormwater side, if you remember some of the large rains, there's some complaints down in the state streets. We kind of did an overall drainage study and my staff discovered that things were undersized and couldn't get water quickly enough into the Seaco detention ponds. So that's the first big rock that I'll put in there. And then there, there, I've got a long list of other neighborhoods and we'll just keep putting those smaller rocks into that glass until we use through. But my intent is to, to use as much of that rollover money actually for street preservation.
And that would be mostly repaving sections of streets, not 14,000 more potholes necessarily?
No, no. And, and, and don't get me wrong, Commissioner, there certainly are dollars in my general fund for asphalt and there are also a line item in special street, I'm sorry, special street and highway, which is the gas tax as well for asphalt. So, but the, the majority of that money will hopefully go towards pavement restoration, whether it be like the Kimball project. I mean, there's, there's multiple funds. We have trail money in there, we have stormwater money in there, paying for stormwater improvements, and then, and then the street preservation. Well, we've got, I got a long list of mill and overlay. I've got concrete streets up in Northview, we're going to replace the waterline. And frankly, the pavement condition index of the street is poor. So if I'm going to tear up and do the waterline, I might as well deal with the street. That's a one-time inconvenience, hopefully for those residents and we're done.
Okay, thanks.
Linda Morse, I just, I appreciate, and I can't say enough about the continuing efforts for flood control and for stormwater. And the levy, of course, is the ultimate in flood and whatever we can do, I don't know, it's not all, there's so little of Wildcat Creek in the city compared to the full length of it, but it's just, you know, it, it, and it's got a lot of moving parts. So we fix one place and oops, something else pops up. Somebody gets water in their basement that's never had it in 100 years. And so it's just a constant struggle, but I know that we're making a difference overall and we have to keep plugging away and I know that that's expensive. So there just is never an end to the, these big system needs and enlarging pipes. So can we, instead of putting in just barely adequate pipes when we install in the first place, do we, what do we, so when you are, as an engineer, do you upsize it a little bit so you're, you're able to accommodate what, you know, growth that's coming and so we won't always be faced with small pipes?
Sure. So, you know, one thing that we are going through, okay, I answer your question specifically big picture wise, we currently have a contract with an engineering firm and we're updating all our construction and design specifications. Not necessarily what we should do in terms of project A, B, C, and D, but how should we design the size of that pipe? What is the rainfall intensity chart should we use for sizing that pipe? So we're going through that, Brian's staff is going through that exercise right now. I hope that in the end of 2021, hopefully I can beat the UDO and, and get that polished and out to, it's a little friendly competition, but hopefully we can get that completed and out to the engineers so as new subdivisions come in. To be specific, we do try and size pipes for a 10-year storm. And, and the best way I can explain that to you is it, a 10-year storm encompasses 90% or a 1 in 10 chance of the rainfall intensity. So if you have from a quarter of an inch to say five and a three-quarters of an inch in a six-hour period, we try and size those pipes for that 10-year storm or 90% of the events. Obviously trying to get larger than that, we do do that on certain arterials and collector streets. But to be honest too, some of it is right away restrictions, other utility restrictions, cost, you know, you know, oh shoot, I forget the past commissioner, he and I had some good debates. He used to say, well, we should plan for five, Jim-
Shro.
Thank you. Jim Shro, Jim, Commissioner Shro, Commissioner Shro and I had a number of good discussions and he used to say, well, why don't we design for the 500-year event? And I didn't like this answer, but the truth is we couldn't afford that solution. And we were trying to get the best value with the dollars we had and the funding we did have.
I won't belabor.
Okay.
Uh huh, thank you.
Rob, Aaron Estabrook, I, a couple of years ago, I guess I, I had that question about the dedicated funding for PED pedestrian projects, but then last year there was the snow removal and you tracked that. I, I have a new problem for you to figure out. Would like to know, I, I imagine that your department has one of the highest, if not the highest kind of turnover, employee turnover ratios. I, I would like to know going into this budget year, what the cost of that training is in lieu of us retaining that employee? What's that cost? In the same kind of way that you, you just mentioned, we had a $300,000, you know, gap now that, that Parks and Rec isn't doing it. What, what are we losing by not doing those things that those employees on that exit interview indicated are reasons why they left by what, what, what costs are involved in the retraining? That's just, just another problem I'd like to, and I know you're good at solving those, so.
I'm still keeping track of snow and ice, just so you know. Haven't had very many events this year. But, okay, thank you, sir. Mayor? Okay, thank you, Commissioners. Last but not least, our seven-time reigning champion, Eddie Estes, Director of Park and Rec. Where's your slides, Eddie? I didn't do it.
He has a separate power. He's the best.
He doesn't have eight pages in those.
I didn't hit the link.
Well, I'll, I'll just start off by saying, yeah.
Well, I'll, I'll just start off by saying, yeah, Rob's, Rob's accurate. I love his numbers, his figures, it's always entertaining. And I brought several staff members with me tonight to present as well as my own PowerPoint, so I can win and share the Windbag Award tonight. So please be patient. We did bring a lot of staff in and interesting, a real theme tonight. Staffing, recruitment, retention, OEI. I think I heard that from every one of the departments tonight. So I'm Eddie Estes, the Director of Parks and Recreation. So Mayor Commissioners, thank you for your patience tonight staying with us. We have our own PowerPoint, but we'll go pretty quick. We even include some pictures, so hopefully it'll be entertaining. I'm taking another approach tonight from what you've heard so far with all the other departments. I want to recognize staff, Parks and Recreation staff. And I have with me tonight Randy Clifford, David Baker, Susan Adams, Scott Shoemaker, Wyatt Thompson, Deb Watkins, Casey Smithson. They've all been through a very difficult year this past year. We did provide you an awful lot of accomplishments, but each one of these division heads have had their division and the services they provide either completely stopped, shut down, or severely altered through the year. So I really want them to have an opportunity to be able to highlight their division and what they have accomplished and what it is that they're working on. I don't do the work. They do. And they provide tremendous opportunities for everybody in the community. So I think it's important that we focus on, you know, what those are. 2021 initiatives, I'm going to cover some of these a little bit. One of the things I didn't put on here, but I'm really considering renaming the department to the Parks and Recreation Construction Department, with completion in 2021 of $25 million worth of vertical construction is significant. Three recreation centers, Scott's Asian Exhibit. Susan will be initiating the Flynn Hills Discovery Center Kidscape. Casey has multiple park projects occurring. Aquatics alone is going to be occupying staff tremendously through 2021. You'll hear that from Casey as well. OEI, critical to our department. Critical to staff recruitment and retention. You'll see they're focused on hiring. We have 26 open positions in the department right now that are budgeted for 2021. A few of those are new positions for new facilities. I believe we have four full-time for new facilities and two part-time, but the rest of those are open positions that we need to get hired. As well as, as Tammy referred to, the 100-plus that will require for aquatics. Just the recruitment and the hiring process is going to be a tremendous task. And I really appreciate Tammy, HR Department, for really committing themselves to helping us get those people on board. Workplace environment, the joint maintenance facility, you heard that from several different divisions as well. To me, that really shows that commitment and investment in our staff. To have a proper work environment is critical. Casey's staff and the 30-plus that he has that'll be involved in that joint maintenance facility, again, it's, to me, it's a part of OEI, it's a part of commitment and showing our staff that we recognize their efforts. Everybody has to say COVID once or twice through all their presentations. All of our operations, the services that we deliver severely impacted by COVID. Everything that we do moving forward is going to take a high level of scrutiny. How are we going to offer camps this summer? How are we going to open water parks and, you know, have an aquatic season? All of our facilities are operating with reduced admissions, reduce, you know, occupancy, simply to make sure we have a safe environment, direct impact to obviously our revenue. How do we do things moving forward? How do we continue to provide services for the community? I like to speak of the hundreds of thousands of opportunities that these people provide, either through animal shelter services, clear to zoo admissions. Hundreds of thousands of opportunities that occur with the 100,000-plus at the pools, several hundred thousand that participate in recreation programs. Zoo attendance, Discovery Center attendance, all that is going to be severely and has been severely impacted by COVID. How are we going to do that moving forward? It certainly is not going to be the same. I don't think we are going to ever go back to pre-COVID style of operations. I don't think moving forwards, you're going to see anything similar to what you've seen previously. You'll hear that from staff. We talked last fall about increased cost recovery, setting fees for our programs and activities, trying to increase revenue, trying to generate a fair fee for programs and activities. I just point this out because I need to bring that back to you this spring so that we can get that finalized as we develop fees for programs and activities. And then the last part of our discussion tonight is our overall departmental challenges. We have to recognize community expectations versus, as you've heard, budget constraints from a lot of different departments. We obviously aren't going to be able to deliver services like we have in the past. We're going to have to reduce what we do. 2020 was an example. I don't think that 2021 is going to be tremendously different. Randy will speak of programs and activities and what he envisions for 2021. Casey, you'll hear from him, you know, just the reduction of the number of people that he's had available to him, and we're going to continue probably to reduce that seasonal employees. And that's part of that mowing alteration that Rob spoke of. The way we deliver services has been dramatically affected and is going to be continued. You'll hear that, and that's why I wanted each one of these division heads to be here to speak specifically of some of those items. So unless you have questions specific for me, I'm here. But I'm going to stand aside, Randy Clifford. Will speak of recreation. And David is here also with the Douglas Center.
I see. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to visit with us this evening. As Eddie mentioned, we're going to try to tag team this a little bit and give you some different perspectives from all the different divisions within the department. As has been said, I'm sure many times this evening, 2020 was a year like no other. And we obviously had many challenges due to the pandemic in our, our department. Specifically in the Recreation Division, we experienced, you know, most recreation programs and activities being suspended or canceled, facilities closed, including the water parks. Our personnel, and I like to commend our personnel because they worked in, they wore a lot of different hats and worked in a lot of different areas, and they typically do. They performed many of the functions that we would usually have seasonal staff performing because we didn't have seasonal staff last year. So they took care of athletic field maintenance, they took care of tournament facility supervision, you know, worked on park painting and maintenance projects and assisted with communications and social media efforts and assisted in other divisions. So I think they did a good job of plugging themselves in and making themselves useful in other ways. Obviously, a lot of demands on our Building Services Division as well with the enhanced protocols and mandates for cleaning and sanitizing that was required because of COVID. There were some highlights though, that I want to kind of touch on, some bright spots for the year. As the year unfolded, we did have some ability to resume some level of services with some approved reopening plans and some modified programs and events. We were able to, and first off, we were able to offer some virtual programs and resources that I think were beneficial for the community. We also worked through some of the challenges of COVID to offer the first juried public art exhibition in coordination with the Arts and Humanities of Azure Board. Very pleased about that outcome. We had a, a partial tournament season, resumed those in mid-June, and had eight weekends that we had events. We offered six special events still, so we were able to offer a few events that could be modified or again adjusted to allow for safety precautions. Couple of summer theater workshops. In the fall, we offered, started to offer some modified adult sports leagues and some youth sports clinics. And we're currently in a modified ice rink season as well. So we have some things that have happened still this year. I'm pleased the staff was able to work with those, those particular activities to bring those to the community. A lot of the focus this past year for our staff, and what was certainly a positive development for the community, is working with the new recreation centers. Many planning and operational meetings, you know, throughout the construction process, a lot of site visits, working on staffing and operational plans. And we're utilizing a blend of existing staff and some new positions as we gear up for those openings. You know, finalizing, finalizing operation manuals and a rental fee structure, coordinating FFNE and preparing for move-in, coordinating school use and public use and how that's going to, how that's going to look as we open the two middle school rec center sites. So I think we've had a lot of, a lot of opportunity to work with those projects and have a very hands-on approach, which has been very beneficial. Looking ahead for '21 and this next year, we will be opening these new recreation centers. Anthony, probably in April, Eisenhower location, and probably June, July. So there's a lot of work that's going to happen with those, those facilities to get ready for that. Again, just a reminder of what some kind, what the amenities are we're bringing to the community. About 40,000 square feet of new space at each location, along with what's happening with the Douglas project that Mr. Baker will speak of, bringing, you know, 100,000 square feet of new recreation facilities to the community that'll serve some great, I think greatly serve some needs here. But in each one of the middle school rec centers, two gyms with a total of four courts, we can accommodate basketball, volleyball, pickleball. We can put down portable turf and accommodate soccer or high-velocity sports. We have a walking track, walking running track, multi-purpose room with a kitchen, you know, lounge and viewing areas to service a lot of different types of activities. We're planning on a seven-day-per-week schedule, so, you know, a full schedule of access for these new facilities. Typical schedule during the school year would be a Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And we would have weekend hours as well. These facilities have been designed for school use versus public use and being able to accommodate both of those. And so this, what we call the school-side gym will be secure and available for the school to use during school days. And yet the public side with the walking track and the messaging level will still be available for the public to use during all hours. And then obviously we have the availability of the school side during evenings, weekends, and summers. We are intending to open our facilities with no daily admissions, as was planned for. Part of this entire process, what we told the community, what was talked about in the steering committee, what the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board recommended. You know, if, if circumstances change and we have to look at something different with that model, we've made provisions for how we might adopt some sort of a admission fee model as well. But we are currently moving forward with the no-admission model. As far as the first half of the year, I think we'll be very limited still on programs and activities. We'll have some modified special events that we'll plan to offer. It really won't be until the second half of this year that we start to look at restarting and resuming some selected programs and activities and ramping up our facility operations as we kind of gear up for the fall/winter season of '21, '22, which is probably the first time we'll start to really see some of those programs and activities will be reintroduced. So in a nutshell, that's kind of what we're looking at. Let's talk a little bit more about some specific challenges and how we look at aquatics for this, for the summer at a later spot in the presentation. But I wanted to give you a quick recap on the year, and tell you what we've been working on in recreation. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Baker here to speak specifically to the Douglas Activity Center.
Those are the pictures I promised you. The Douglas on the right is very accurate to today. Anthony's conception, very much to the thought today, Mayor.
Good evening Commissioners, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the Mayor and Commissioner Morris and Commissioner Eddie, you were on the previous commission that made this happen, and the new Commissioners that are here to continue to support us. The Douglas Activity Center is going to be something that this community has needed so bad. I've been spending time there every day, pretty much every day, since the inception started. We, we started building, built ground on March the 4th, and we're getting close to a year and it's nearly completed. I spoke today with the superintendent, John McKeever, Superintendent for Trinium, and he indicated today that we were about 95% complete. So we are very, very, very close to, to completing this facility. We're looking at mid-March, maybe before, possibly as the opening date. We'll probably know that, know a little bit more about that in the coming days. Some of the things that I think you're going to be pleased with in regard to the facility, we've talked about the history of that area. And this facility is certainly going to help us preserve the history that a lot of community people do not know about. There's going to be a mural in there depicting the history of Yuma Street and the Douglas Center and the Douglas, and the Annex. We're putting a, a large portrait of Frederick Douglas, which will be located above the elevator. So when you come in that facility, you're going to see some history if you don't know the history of, of that area, of the Douglas Center, of the Annex. That's, that's very important and vital to this community. We're, we're going to have longer hours of operation. Typically what we've had with the Douglas Center, but we've not opened on, on Sundays. So, so we're going to have a little bit longer of times of, of operation with this new facility. Our data activities are going to pretty much have the same things that we do now. Your pickleball, open gym, the track, and our fitness area, which is a little bit larger than what we had at the Annex, if, we're looking forward to that. Our fitness classes will probably, if depending on the, on the, on the virus, we're hoping maybe we can get started back with those this summer. And if not, hopefully by fall for sure. It does have a community room, just like the other facilities. And together with the Douglas Center that we have today, the Annex which we have today, and adding the new building, this is going to make this the Frederick Douglas complex, Recreation Complex. So we'll be able to do multiple things at this facility that we have not been able to do in the past. And it's just going to be a tremendous addition to this community in regard to recreation. And it's something that's been much needed. And being able to be a part of that and be there every day and watch this thing go to come together has just been really something to, to be a part of and, and exciting. So I think in the next 30, 40 days, this is going to be the first one that we open. And so it's going to be a good test for, for what the community really needs and what we've been looking for.
Susan Adams with Discovery Center.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for your time this evening. And just to give you a little profile of what has happened at the center. I know 2020 for all of us brought a wide variety of change. And personally, I love change, so that's good. Partnerships became very important to us and expanding what we had been to making what we could be today to meet the needs of, of our constituents and our, and the guests and people that are interested in the messaging that we bring. I do think it was an opportunity for growth, for us to be something different. And I think that that's very important in the world we are in today. So the main thing that we're projecting is the Kidscape Project, which we brought to you December 15th for approval for an RFP process. We're currently finishing. We're currently finishing that completion. It is a design and build of the second-floor mezzanine in the children's area of the building. It's about a twenty-four-square-foot visitor experience. And we're looking for a design-build team that can take it from the concept of design all the way to build and construct and redeveloping that whole second floor. I think we've said in the RFP that over the years, we'll be celebrating nine years in April, that we've been having to fill that space with additional exhibits or activities which cost additional funds from the general budget. So lessening that cost could be huge for all of us. This is being funded through our Flint Hills Discovery Center Foundation grants and private donations. So that's a great thing, nothing coming from the city accounts. Education update, that was extremely interesting as we, as everyone has mentioned, we shut down and were able to open back up as a building in June to the public. And with that, we also were able to offer summer camp with limited numbers of children. But it was a great opportunity for us to get people back into the building and get staff back into the building. And we've been doing it safely ever since. On top of that, we went to a lot of virtual programming, as I'm sure hopefully you've seen. And we did a lot of outside activities like walk and talks. And then during the Halloween, we did a bat box building, which was very popular and kind of different for us. We went, our biggest event is Breakfast with Santa every year, and there were a lot of disappointed parents and I believe children. But we actually were able to just revise that program and make it into a virtual Santa program. And we had great success. People would zoom in and have just five minutes with Santa or ten, depending on how many children they had. And it was a great response in the community, and we're thrilled that we are still able to offer it. In 2020, 2021, we are still focusing on virtual, take-home, and outdoor experiences. And then in the summer, we are looking forward to starting our summer camps again. And then with fall and moving into the end of 2021 with a little bit more in-person opportunities as well. Temporary exhibits, we are thrilled to say we negotiated in 2020 for quite a few of the contracts. We had a big exhibit coming this summer, this of 2020, excuse me, Big League Fun. And we were able to negotiate to move that to 2022, which was a great experience to, to be able to transfer that, that exhibit to a different year rather than just have it available and not really have the potential for interaction in the community and actually admissions coming through. In the 2021, or excuse me, the end of 2020, we brought in another exhibit called Animation Land. It was scheduled to be Roots of Wisdom, but there were too many hand-on components that they decided they didn't want that to be shipped out. So we got a different exhibit. We're really great. It's called Animation Land. And currently, we just opened Run, Jump, Fly, and it runs through May. We've also received thirty thousand in sponsorship dollars to support Run, Jump, Fly exhibit. So very proud of that and thrilled to the community for the support and the belief in what we're doing there. If you haven't heard, in the summer, we've got Hands-on Harley-Davidson. So all of you motorcycle riders out there. And then in the fall, we know everybody loves dinosaurs, got Dinosaur Discoveries. And we've been able to reduce our payments to under fifty thousand for the year for 2021 in exhibits, which is a huge savings to the city. I'd say for our future issues, of course, as everyone else has stated, is staffing. We, of course, have lost staff, just as everyone else has, and building back up our seasonal will be crucial. Happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Mr. Schumaker with Sunset Zoo, another positive project to occur.
Thank you, Eddie. Commissioners, Mayor Scott Schumaker, Director of Sunset Zoo. I have a whole bunch of stuff here that we could talk about how COVID has affected the zoo. Not going to do that. We've had enough of that, I think, of that tonight. The zoo did close in mid-March. It opened again in June to the public. The reopening came with some restrictions, some social distancing restrictions, mask-wearing in certain areas. We disinfect the zoo now on a regular basis, things like that. The community, my interaction with them seems very grateful that we're open and that they have a place to go with their families. And so we're very glad that we can provide that, that opportunity. Obviously, closing did affect our attendance and our revenues for the year. But we'll see how 2021 plays out. We did cancel all our in-person programming, so we did not do summer camps this year or last year because we did not have seasonal staff. We laid them all off. But we did ramp up some virtual programming, just like the Discovery Center. So we, we have done virtual keeper chats. We have done virtual Storytime. That's a partnership we have with the library, and so we continue to do that. We've been doing virtual birthday parties, and that's actually been pretty successful for us. And so those are things I think we're going to continue to do post-COVID. They, they seem to be successful and they extend our reach significantly throughout the country. So the virtual element is something that I think is going to stay with us for a while. Like others, we're down a couple of positions due to the hiring freeze, and so that's impacted us, obviously, like everybody else, but staff is all chipping in and covering the duties as, as best we can. Going into 2021, obviously, we look to hopefully ramp up in the summertime, depending on how the vaccination program goes and how soon we reach herd immunity. And I love that phrase because we've used that in the zoo world for a long time. So glad to see that making it out into the public. So like Susan, we hopefully will do summer camps this year, which will require us ramping up our, our staffing and, and again, we'll be working with Tammy and HR to make that happen. As, as we get into the summer, we're looking at some of our special events. We did cancel all our special events last year except for Spooktacular, which we did in a very modified form. So hopefully towards the end of the summer, maybe we can start offering some more events out at the zoo, which would be, would be good for us and I think good for the community to have some of those events come back. As Eddie mentioned, the, the big thing that's going on at the zoo right now is Expedition Asia. That, if you remember right, is about a $4.3 million project. Two-point-two million of that was raised by private donors. And then the city contributed about two-point-one million to it through the quality-of-life sales tax that was sunsetted several years ago. The site has been cleared and all the underground utilities are in. And they're starting to set rebar for foundations and footers and stuff. They were supposed to pour concrete this week. I don't know if that's going to happen with the weather. But that's a good sign that we're coming up, as they say, out of the ground. Substantial completion for the project should be mid-October of this year. So that'll be an exciting thing to, to open up Expedition Asia as, you may remember, that's three major exhibits in the zoo. It's the biggest, probably the biggest project ever undertaken at Sunset Zoo. All three species are highly endangered, so it's an opportunity for us to, to work with some of these species. The, the other really, I think, important part of it is it will make Sunset Zoo 100% ADA accessible at that point. The lower tier of the zoo has not been ADA accessible. And so when this project is done, we will be 100% ADA accessible, and that'll make it much easier for the community to navigate our zoo and see all that we have to offer. And so 2021, hopefully, will be a year, as I say, I don't know that we'll return to normal, but I do think that we'll hopefully start ramping up some of our programming and, and doing some more in-person stuff maybe towards the end of the year, depending on how the community and COVID looks. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Hassel here. So when you talk about special projects, are you talking about things like Wine in the Wild and Beer with the Bears?
Yes, yes. So we're looking at, at, at wine and brew both, and Spooktacular again. We do a, a lighted event over the winter holidays called Luminary Walk. That is an outdoor-indoor event. There's a good chance we could do some component of that. But yes, those are the kind of things we're looking at. I think some of our earlier events that we've been talking to staff, like our Mother's Day and Father's Day, probably aren't going to happen. Just because it's just too early in the year to tell.
Friends would probably try to have some kind of a grand opening gala thing of some kind, maybe, or not?
Yes. So that's a good question. I mean, that, that is really hard for us to predict at this point. So we're looking at mid-October for substantial completion, and then there'll be, you know, some fine-tuning that they have to do. The big question I've, that I've tried to make sure our boards understand and the public understand is we have to bring animals in at that point and, and put them in those exhibits and get them acclimated to those exhibits before we can let the public kind of run around. So that's the great unknown. It could take a week. It could take us two months to get tigers acclimated to a new space and these bears acclimated. So it's hard to say, but yes, we will do a grand opening. I just don't know when.
And it might end up getting kind of cold by the
Yeah, which means then we may be doing it spring of 2022. Any other questions?
And in general, how, how are the animals doing?
They're doing great. I will, I will say through this whole mess this last year, our animal care staff has done an amazing job, and they have worked day in and day out. They didn't get to go home and work from the home, you know? They're essential workers. And so they've been out every day taking care of the animals. The animals are doing great, and I think our keeper staff has, has done an amazing job. So that's always forefront, obviously, for us, is to make sure we're providing quality animal care. And that did not drop off any. Thank you.
Wyatt Thompson, our Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation, covers the park aspects.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Wyatt Thompson, Assistant Director, Parks and Recreation. I want to echo Eddie's opening comments about the excellent work that staff from all of our divisions did throughout a very challenging 2020. Specifically for, for parks, they're also essential workers, much like the zoo or the animal shelter or, or others in the city that, that never stopped reporting to work throughout COVID. You know, the, the grass didn't stop growing, trees kept growing, plants kept growing, things needed to be fixed. In fact, parks and trails actually saw a significant increase in use. And so the pressure on park staff to deliver through the days of the pandemic when all of our indoor facilities were closed was actually much greater than a normal year as we saw attendance increase at all of, all of our outdoor facilities and amenities as, as folks were looking to, to do something to get by with what everything else was happening. So Casey Smithson, our Park Superintendent, will kind of cover some of the operational issues, challenges, priorities for 2021 in an upcoming slide. I'd like to focus on a couple of our major parks, projects, and initiatives that are still continuing. The first of those is our FEMA projects at Annenberg Park. Obviously, there's a, a flood back in 2018, Labor Day. We're still in some ways recovering from that flood. Casey and his staff have been working with FEMA and the Department of Emergency Management at, at the state level on four projects. When the water from Wildcat Creek came into Annenberg Park, it damaged three sections of trail. It removed about six inches of asphalt millings and rock from the parking lot and deposited that into the lake. It also, which obviously damages the lake, and it also damaged one of our storage facilities. And so the, Casey has been working with FEMA to, basically on four projects totaling $2 million estimated. The, the city portion of that is about $300,000 to pave the parking lot, repair the trail, dredge the lake, and then replace the storage facility. So all of those are, are happening and will be hopefully under construction in '21 and '22. The other projects, we have Clarenburg Trail in City Park. Our last segment of trail on the east side of City Park is five foot wide. Everywhere else is an eight-foot multi-use path. This project will replace that sidewalk with an eight-foot path to complete the loop. It will also connect the trail to Johnny Caw to provide another accessible entrance to the new plaza space that was completed last year. We're targeting CDBG funds for that and hope to have that completed and under construction later this year. The Stonehaven Park Plan, I'll talk about in a second. Schultz Park, Roger Schultz Park, back in 2018, the commission accepted the master plan for that park. And in 2018 and 2019 authorized CIP projects for the first phase. You can see the graphic from the master plan on this slide. That represents kind of the, the first area that we'd like to develop. And so we have a $240,000 project, and we've submitted for a land and water conservation grant that would double that. So almost a half a million dollars that can go into the, the first phase of that park development, which we think will be huge for the park, for that neighborhood that really lacks other park access and amenities. The, the final project that I'll touch on is the Stonehaven Park Master Plan. This is our thirtieth city park. It's under development now. We recently acquired this property. It was a land donation. And this is in the southwest part of the community. We'll be presenting this master plan to you. It's at a future meeting. We just recently finalized it. Park Board reviewed it. You can see some of the infrastructure for the subdivision that's already under construction. It's a fifteen-acre park with a three-acre lake that will be stocked for fishing. The, the initial phase of development will be the perimeter trail that you see going around the lake, a paved trail to provide access to that park, which will be under construction later this year. And then the other amenities will come in the future as funding is available. Happy to answer any questions, or I can introduce Deb Watkins, our Animal Shelter Director. Thank you.
Good evening. I will say I think I have the best job in this whole room. I get to adopt animals and rehome them and get them returned back to their owners. As you can see, it has been an amazing year for the animal shelter. But with that comes a lot of sacrifice and dedication from my staff. I only have seven full-time staff, and we do have three open positions. And because of that, it does cause a lot of fatigue, stress, and compassion fatigue having those open positions. We were able to go by appointments, which is more labor-intensive, making those appointments and, and making sure that the people are, have their applications online filled out and can come in and call them and make callbacks. Because if someone has made an appointment at two o'clock to see an animal and it gets unadopted, then of course my staff need to call all the other people back that have made appointments to see that same animal. Since we did work the whole time during the pandemic, we were one of the first ones to reopen up. We also established lots of protocols and dedicated an intake room, medical exam, standardized protocols, vaccinations, and ringworm treatments, which have made our life-saving procedures. And so you can see there that we did over 500 spays and neuters. Kansas State University, the partnership with them, Casey's crew helped us make a one-hole room into a state-of-the-art surgery suite. And so with that, we were able to save at least $40,000 in cost savings with Kansas State coming in. They come in on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and the veterinary students come in, and they're able to do the spays and neuters. And what I mean by life-saving procedures, we're able to do things like leg amputations, eye inoculations, and things that we weren't able to do before. I will say that in the animal shelter world, one of the things that we talk about a lot is length of stay. And so I'm very happy to report that our length of stay for dogs is only five days. And that is absolutely amazing in the animal shelter world. And the length of stay for cats is currently 22 days. And so you can see that these animals are not spending as much time in the shelter. And so that cost savings, again, of not having them there every single day. Our live release rate for 2020 is 94%. And again, I have to say that my staff have been absolutely amazing in making our mission happen to save that many animals' lives. Any questions?
Just wanted to say, you know, great job on all that media posting.
Yes.
Because, you know, I share those and people don't comment on anything, but boy, they love pictures of the animals. And so hopefully that helps get them out of the shelter.
Yes, and I really, really appreciate that. I will say that the animal shelter has kind of become the feel-good of the city of Manhattan. Thank you for your time.
Well, again, I appreciate staff, their efforts, and as you heard from many of them, a good portion of our Parks and Recreation staff spent all the COVID season coming to work every single day and trying to provide whatever services they could, even if we did have some facilities closed at different times. So we wanted to focus tonight a little bit about how we're moving forward and the positive aspects and the things we can continue to provide for the community. So that was kind of the most of our message tonight. But as I said, I brought my own PowerPoint. And part of our discussion tonight was if we are faced with reduced revenues with the 2021 season as well as into 2022, we obviously are going to have to reduce some of the services that we provide. We accomplished that substantially this past year by not hiring any of the, as you've heard, hundreds of seasonals. We produced a tremendous amount of savings to the general fund, even through our pools not being open. Pained us all to see that, but those were some measures that we had to take, not just for COVID reasons, but also for financial reasons in regards to reduced revenues. So as we approach 2021 and enter the 2022 budget season, there's still unknowns that I think we'll be faced with. We need to be prepared within our department to potentially reduce some services. And frankly, we'll be approaching this upcoming year somewhat similar to what we did the past year. So that's... Jason, other comments?
We touched on this last Friday. It's going to be a difficult year. It just flat out is. We don't know where revenues are going to go. Clearly, we had tremendous savings in 2020 due to the due diligence of the people behind me. And that is them cutting back, releasing, and not bringing programs and services to the forefront. We're likely to have a reduction in sales tax again. We don't know what's going to happen. Obviously, we all want the vaccine to arrive quicker than it ever will. We want folks to be intermingling and grouping and gathering, and Manhattan have the robust economy that it typically does with its visitor. That is going to be a challenge. We can't expect sales tax to rebound in a year. We can't expect property taxes and valuations to grow, and we'll continue to monitor people paying their taxes. It looks good so far. It looks favorable. We'll have to continue to watch it. Our programs and building permits and court revenues, which are very high revenue streams, were all significantly impacted in 2020. More than likely, they'll continue to be down and we'll monitor those for '21. As you've heard many, many times tonight, our people are our priority. In order for us to meet where we want to be with our people in '21, it may be a combination of these two things, but you can't talk about taxes without talking about operations. If we're going to keep taxes the same and no additional revenues come in, we're going to start cutting right now. We're going to start reducing anyway. We have to. We cannot predict the future. We do not have reliable revenue streams in order to move forward. Sales tax are going to move around. That is the nature of sales tax, and we rely heavily on it. So we're going to start now. In '18, we started in June and we barely made headway on a reduction in revenue that we knew was forthcoming. We had to start last year early. We're going to have to start this year early. The next couple of slides are about some of the strategies to get that done. Park and Recreation is $9 million of a $32 million general fund budget. It is where the majority of discretion lies. Even in a COVID year, the folks behind me led a lot of people that were not doing their normal jobs. They weren't. They were challenged. And you heard a lot of them talk about things they didn't do, other things their staff had to go do in order to maintain. Hundreds of seasonal staff that support all seven of these divisions, hundreds. And that's children, kids, adolescents, and young people in our community that didn't have jobs. This is very difficult. You have committed professionals to services throughout the community and we told them to pull it back. And for five years, we've told them to pull it back to a degree. Nothing like last year. We have to start now. We want to give you a heads up. And I think we've got a couple of slides here Eddie can walk through. But this is where we've gone because of all the presentations you've heard tonight. There's not a lot of flexibility. You heard demands and needs and sacrifices that a lot of other departments have made too. These are the areas that clearly in 2020, we made great strides by not offering the program. That's not a desirable outcome. I get it. But it's also really the only choice we have moving forward until we can talk and really work through that '22 budget. Eddie?
Randy and Casey are going to come back up and talk about some specifics of these. You've seen a number of these slides and some of these categories previously when we talked about 5% and 10% reductions to you previously. So, you know, Randy's worked on this for months.
Long time.
With his staff for months. So we just wanted to give you a taste of how we're approaching if we're going to have to make reductions. Thank you, Randy.
Certainly. Thank you, Eddie. Again, Randy Clifford, Director of Recreation. Again, thank you for the time to discuss this more difficult subject. As Jason said, we have to be making some choices and some decisions about what kind of a strategy we're going to use moving forward. Because as excited as we are about these new facilities coming online, there will be new costs associated with those facilities. And we're going to have to be able to balance some of those costs with some of our existing costs with current programs and services. And that's really kind of what we're talking about here. On top of that, we're also talking about a resumption of services anyway because of coming off of the impact of COVID and what that's going to look like for '21. And we know, as I said earlier, we know in the first half of the year, we won't be providing a lot of services yet. And we'll be gearing up to try to reintroduce some level of programming in the summer, perhaps a little bit more emphasis in the fall. So the strategy kind of fits in with that gradual restoration of some programs and services. But it allows us to look at 2021 and, as it says here, modify or reduce or suspend some activities and make some decisions about how we move forward. And some of the things we've done in the past, they may not look the same as we move forward. And so we're not really talking about just, you know, flat eliminating programs forever. But we are talking about making a number of changes that we won't, you know, come back in '21 with a lot of these services. Or they'll be done at a reduced level. And like in our arts and amenities programs, you know, we're talking about a 50% level of services in many cases. Or changing the focus on those programs to primarily summer programs or serving primarily youth or looking how we can modify those programs to make them a little more feasible with the budget and also reduce some costs at the same time. Same thing with adult sports and youth sports. We have the opportunity potentially for other providers to step in on some of these program options. And we already did that a little bit with youth soccer in the fall and that worked fine with the soccer clubs kind of stepping into that role. And so again, we have to look at creating some priorities, looking what some of our core services are moving forward, and to some extent, refocusing our efforts to begin to center more of our programming around the new recreation centers. And looking at those programs and services that we will try to offer as some of our current staff move into those facilities, they in turn will look at things they can do to program out of those facilities. And it may not necessarily ever look quite the same as it did before and likely won't. I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up on some of the things that are going to be impacted continuing into '21. And we'll look to evaluate those moving forward, potentially can reintroduce some programs over a kind of a staggered approach in the next two or three years. But, you know, again, it won't necessarily look the same. And we are committed to trying to offer some sort of arts and park program summer, but it may not be to the extent we've done in the past few years. And again, some of these programs will be likely modified or they'll be delayed. And so I just kind of wanted to give you an opportunity to look at that and see some areas we've targeted. And again, these have been on lists before as we discussed some of these budget strategies even this past summer. But it is at a point where we need to pull the trigger on some of these decisions. And to carry that a little further with some of our facility operations, same thing with aquatics. We're not going to be in a position where we can go from no services at all this past summer back to the 100% level of operating all three facilities this summer. We're going to have staffing issues. We're going to have operational issues. We're going to try and bring facilities back online that were shut down for an extended period of time. We're going to be trying to restore some of the staffing that we lost by not having any kind of a season last summer. And so we're going to suggest an approach that utilizes two of the three facilities, decreases some hours to some extent, allows us to accommodate some of the services that we wouldn't have because CECO is not open, you know, shorten our season, modify some of our special promotions a little bit. So there are some changes that we're recommending here that I think will allow us to bring aquatics back online, but not at the level of what we were doing prior to last summer. And a chance to kind of, again, build that capacity again. Very concerned about, you know, having adequate staff, having the ability to hire and train them. Even things like having an auditorium closed that, in case they have an impact, has an impact because there's no classes now being offered for lifeguard training. So we're going to have to kind of do that all in-house. So we've got to have the ability to, you know, hire enough staff and then get them trained and prepped and ready to go. We feel like that's something we can do with two facilities. To do all three would be, I think, virtually impossible. So I wanted to give you a sense of what we're looking at for aquatics. And then kind of like Casey speak a little bit more to the operational side of aquatics as well as some of the things he's looking at with parks.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Casey Smithson, Park Superintendent. I kind of backtrack a little bit too on, for city parks, we're down, again, eight personnel full-time right now. We didn't have seasonal staff most of last year, which equals about 15,000 hours, man-hours, close to that. Right now with my eight full-time down, that's about 1,300 hours a month, give or take, that we're also not putting to prep for pools. Just kind of backtrack here. City parks itself, within the park section within cities, where most of the vacancies are at. That work group is about 14. We're down to about eight of that. Okay? So that work group does building maintenance, it does turf maintenance, and it does at least the operation side of aquatics. If we look back to 2020, we did not do aquatics. I was short about five positions in parks at that time. Obviously, last year was a budgetary situation and a staffing situation and a COVID situation. We know that. But essentially, all I had to took that manpower and put towards keeping the parks operational, playgrounds safe, mowing done, to what extent we could without having aquatics. I'm now sitting in a situation where I have less manpower than I did last year. So I've said it to Eddie and up the chain here multiple times, probably for three or four months, that what we saw in 2020, I can't deliver that in 2021 with aquatics. And if I do aquatics, something else has to give because I don't have... Even if I started recruiting today, I'm not going to have the manpower by the time we have to have water and pools. I mean, we're going to plan on having, or trying to have water in April. We're going to see if this is going to deliver or not. You know, sometime in April by May, first of May, basically, so we can start training guards in that part of it. But I'm in a situation where you see the list is, that's pretty much what some of the things that we did not do last year because I can't deliver. I'm at a point now that if I deliver water, I've got to, that's where Rob talked about, the mowing has to go over. I have to not shed. I just had to move some of that labor over. I mean, just moving the mowing over there and contracting some additional mowing, I'm reducing that about a quarter of what I still have to mow. We go back to the previous slide with Randy. How we're all interconnected here is that all those rec programs that we're not, we're going to defer last year and this year is going to save me man-hours because we're going to focus our, my mowing time, my maintenance time, and irrigation time on Annenberg, City Park, the Norville Field, maybe Eisenhower Complex. But we're not going to fire up CECO. We're not going to fire up Griffith. We'll be lucky to probably mow that every three weeks, those fields. You know, so it's to a point that we have to back away in order to get... For, to get aquatics on, I'm going to have to back away considerable amount of work that I did get accomplished last year. But we still have compliance issues. I still have to meet the obligations for playgrounds. Because again, with COVID, the outdoor activities and trails, the activity activities are high. And that's not going to go down. So again, the list up here is really, you start going down the list. Snow removal, that's this time of year. I've been, we've been out, part of the last two mornings, I'll be out in the morning and what crew we have left and on a skeleton crew to try to do our portion of, you know, the quantity that we have to run, 23 miles of sidewalks, five miles of roads that we clear snow on, 21,000 square feet of hand crew that we have to go move by hand or snowboards, and 1,700 parking stalls that we clear. And I've got a crew that's down, I'm bound to a skeleton crew that we have to operate and additionally do all our forestry. Today, in the middle of a snowstorm, I had to turn around and our cemetery crew had to go do a service. So there's four people that we could not, they had to dedicate to that service that we were providing. So the position that we're in is some things cannot get done. I'm just out of, I'm out of options. We're doing what we can. So... Deferred maintenance, right now, I need to, with our aging equipment, I need to rent. I'm going to have to rent a newer wide-area mower just because our equipment, I can't risk... When I have, last year I had six guys mowing. This year I'm going to have three. I need to be mowing 14-foot at a time. But I can't risk my older equipment breaking down and not having that much area being covered at one time. So, you know, we're looking at ways to be as most efficient as we can and cover as much ground as we can. But at this point, we're going to have to spend a little bit of money in order to make things happen. The no-street tree program, we haven't really had a street tree program for three to four years. Give or take, the trees are, you know, you're talking 10,000 to 15,000 we spend on, had spent on trees before. But by the time you have, we don't have labor. We're short. One person in forestry and another person in forestry has somewhat been taking over my turf program for two years. So we're down to four people in forestry. So it's really labor. And you add that in, we don't have the labor force to keep up with it. Blue Earth, at this point, I think with aquatics, if I, we attempt to get Norview and City on, I didn't have Blue Earth last year and it just takes additional staff. And that facility takes daily staff as well just to maintain. I don't see it being feasible at this time, again, this year. The mowing frequency, that's what I talked about, CECO, Griffith. We're just going to, we're going to have to back away our frequency where we used to mow things weekly. Actually, our sport fields, we used to mow them twice a week. And in regular parkland, we move once a week. Some of those, that's why we had to reduce that in half so we could focus on where the rec programs were going to be held. Annenberg, Norville, and Eisenhower, and then City Park. So... Sanitation, again, we, throughout COVID, we've been doing high-level sanitation on restrooms. We had to back away in the winter. I had several staff on medical as well. We ran out of... We just couldn't keep up keeping the restrooms, we just had to post them, basically use it at your own risk. And we were there as often as we could to disinfect, similar to what we did with the playgrounds when we went fully operational last year. Again, pool prep. Again, pool prep, we generally have spent about a thousand hours preparing for pools from September to April. I'm in about a two-hundred-hour range right now, trying to get ready. So if you can look at the gap, I have to have water by April and we're down about six or eight hundred hours. We're already behind. So that's what I, that's what I'm looking at every day when I come in and go move snow rather than have, you know, having people working on pools.
I think your picture is.
Yeah. Yeah, this is just a few, just a kind of the complexity of what our staff has to deal with. This is here at City Park. Most of those photos are right around the UV ultraviolet systems, but that gives you, that's about one-fourth of that pump room at City Park and what goes into it, large, large plumbing, large pipe size, special electronics in the ultraviolet. Again, the water chemistry, there's a lot that goes into it and a lot of hours. So, you know, our staff, my staff's definitely trying, they've been, they've been working from day one through COVID and we're trying to keep up, but I guess that this is the reality. It's still going to take time for me to get get people hired, even through the budget series.
I'm going to, I'm going to tag team with Casey just a little bit. This slide, I think, is critically important. Some of you have been at different times in those pump rooms. Northview is just a smaller scale of City Park here. What's important with this is even if we hired and we're able to hire multiple people, the training that is required and the critical understanding of the operation of these does not happen in a week or two weeks or three weeks. It takes time. Casey has, in the past, always had certified aquatic facility operators. We've been sending some, you know, on virtual classes, not traveling and in person, but some of those people have left and we haven't replaced them. We can't just flip a switch and make these pools run and make them operate. You know, remember always, Randy's people are lifeguards. They save people's lives and it starts with proper, safe water that Casey provides with the operation of these facilities. So this slide is important. It's not that we don't want to or that we can't. There's just training that has to happen and it takes time. And we want to be careful that we don't provide any unsafe conditions. That's why we're talking about this now. We're doing everything we can to get things prepared and ready, but we can't just flip a switch and go back to a hundred percent of where we were pre-COVID.
So when you say you're down six people or something in these critical areas, is that because you haven't been authorized to hire them or you can't find them to start with?
It's we're in the, we're in the process of getting positions announced. They, yeah, they're not, they're not announced at this time, but we're working on it.
And so my big question would be, it's been now five or six months since we passed 2021 budget, and I can't remember anything anyway. What is the 2021 Parks Rec budget? How is that compared to the 2020 actual or what we ended up, did, were we able to raise the 2021 Parks Rec budget up from what they spent last year and or what part of the, how is the 2021 budget compared to the 2019 budget, a normal year? Are we still down a third or what?
Yeah, a lot of our conversation last year about the 21 budget was, you know, we're basically going to put the facts and figures in that we put in for 2020, not knowing.
Okay, so there wasn't really a twenty, an increase for 2021 compared to 2020?
And, you know, when we talk about the services that these folks provide and and we talked about it Friday, just that incremental nature of growing, so you're constantly staying a step ahead. When this plateau started in 2016, 2015, and when I say plateau, I'm really talking sales tax because for fifteen to twenty years, this community has relied on increases in sales tax to fund all of this. That's been the sustainability. And when that sustainability went flat, it's this trend that just starts going down. In 15 and 16, when we come and talk about one and two mil increases because we were flat on sales tax, not well received, 17, same song, 18, same. That trend line of a plateau of flat sales tax has sent this operation to a downward trend because it's not sustainable. You can't take pots of pieces and parts from pots of money and plug holes. The same cost is coming next year. And even though we've played that game a little bit over the years, it wasn't anticipation that at some point that recovery and that slide would start going up by way of sales tax revenue and it has stayed flat. We're at a point where we could fill up hours of your time telling you what it has been to each and every one of these departments for multiple years. And I'm not going to sit here and suggest you go five and six mil increase. That's not sustainable either. We need a sustainable approach for five years to get to a point to recover from this. And I think what the folks tonight have really done a really good job of highlighting is this is where we're at today. There's no dial, there's no switch. Honestly, there's no amount of money that could just be dropped on it from other, from other sources and plug and say, go. This has been multiple years reaching this point in order for us to react to reductions in revenue. It just has. And it's difficult in 15, 16, and 17 to tell you where you're going to be in 20 and 21. And it's difficult today to tell you where we're going to be in 25 and 26, but your decisions today really don't start taking an impact 22, 23, 24. It's the nature of government. You all watch the federal government, you all watch the state government. It's the nature of government. It is very hard to turn the dial and crank it back up once you've been on a certain pattern.
My, my next question would be, if Vern Hendricks could shake fifty thousand bucks loose to pay some, one of our local plumbing contractor people to go down to the Blue Earth Plaza thing and check the stuff every day. I know you, it makes you guys nervous having somebody else dink with your stuff. I understand that, but on a short-term basis, is that even a possibility if we, if there is the Community Foundation or some would offer to fund some of these cuts, so to speak? If there is a reasonable way, I don't know if that's even possible, but if we're sitting here spitballing about how to, how to, it's a short-term fix, I know. So is that even a possibility if, because I know that's one of the things I talked about, the Community Foundation has been willing to try to step up and help out on some things. I know that's not going to fix everything, but are there private contractors? I'm sure the pool guys from Salina and places like that are going to be booked full, getting personal pools open for people. That's probably not an option, but is there some options?
I think there could be in certain areas. I think it's going to be depend on the complexity of the systems, you know, finding qualified people to just because they're a certified plumber doesn't mean they understand the intricacies. You know, essentially, the Blue Earth Plaza is a swimming pool. It's got the filtration and everything like that, but I think there may be some other areas where we may be able to to plug some contract work. You've talked, I mean, there's contract work that, assuming they have, that contractor has the time and capability, there may be some components there we could do and it's worth having some discussion about.
And just the, it's when it comes to like adult league softball or adult kickball stuff, the main thing is, is the administration of those things and then also probably having the, getting the park, getting the fields ready. It's a twofold thing. A, organizing the leagues, B, finding some fires, mowing the fields, chalking and whatever. All of that stuff is too manpower-intensive for the quarter, third staff that you have. Is that essentially what you're saying?
Yeah.
More or less?
It definitely runs into that realm of thinking and this conversation is something that we've wrestled with internally over and over. When you were, use the words sustainable and you use the words discipline and you use the words of following through with what it is, our priorities, and they maintain themselves as priorities. These, these things have not been done. Throwing money at certain little things here and there is not a sustainable approach. I understand why you're saying and suggesting it, Commissioner, I do. I know plenty of people in my ear too about a lot of things that we have done in the past. We've put a lot of money in areas of this community and the folks behind me have taken care of those for a lot of years. We need to prop them up and get them in a position to do it for the future. And that's going to take discipline and it's going to take tough decisions. And I'm, I'm very willing to get back into the conversation that we had and have had many a times with you all about raising property taxes versus going somewhere else to fund it. A group of Manhattan leadership citizens were in this room today and we had the exact same conversation. When I break down the eleven mils of the hundred and fifty-six that they spend every year funding the operation of this organization and paying the debt of that, the sliver of debt at a property taxes, they look at me in a little bit of surprise. When I tell them three million dollars is coming from property taxes to help retire twenty-five million annually, to make that twenty-five million dollar payment, three millions coming from property taxes, they can't fathom where the other twenty-two millions coming from. And when I tell them their four thousand dollar tax bill, when you just break down the eleven mils and you don't even get to the seventeen, just the eleven for the general fund is less than 10%? The four thousand dollars, now they're only kicking three hundred and fifty to the city? They do, they scratch their head. How are you, what else are you operating with? What else we're operating with is not increasing. If we want to sustain things, we've got to raise fees. If we want to sustain things, we have to generate more revenue somehow, some way. Even if we have a pot of money and we go take it, you have to have a plan for what you're going to do when that pot of money is gone. I want the plan. I want it. This organization wants it and we need it. And we can talk about little things here and there, but that discipline and that sustainability has got to come into this conversation at some point.
I have a question. Back a couple slides, the temporary program reductions. So I guess what I'm, what I'm hearing is this is at least a half step if we're trying to get, what I want to know, I guess, is beyond, like you're talking about, 2022, 23, 24. If, if we were to, what you're, what I'm hearing is we're unable to do this at this, at the staffing levels and we're beyond that threshold. So the community needs to understand these things are going to be different. What I hope to hear is what staffing levels need to be to meet what we've already invested in our infrastructure because what has people scratching their head when they drive around town? And we can get, we can blame COVID last year, but what do we do next year when they're, when, or the year after, if we have facilities sitting there that can't be manned because we invested in them, but we're just not willing to pay the staff or raise the fees or the taxes to have people so those city facilities function? That's the bridge I want to see of what the manpower, whatever it is, and if this is the first step into that conversation, that's good. And this list, I, I've heard, you know, you talked about maybe last year, the soccer club helped with some things. Maybe there's other things on these lists that people will take on as projects that are no longer city responsibilities, but that conversation, what I need to know is not the programming, but the actual infrastructure that we've already bought or invested in, what it takes to run those things in the future. And we can't have a Blue Earth Plaza with no water, we can't have a CECO pool with no water. What's it going to take to get to that level? And it, you know, it's not great that we can't get there this summer, but if we can't figure that out between now and this summer for the following year, that is really terrible on us.
And I don't, I don't disagree with your comment or your questionnaire and I would go back to the security that our budget needs to withstand dips. And with three million dollars in a general fund as your cash balance, it was two million dollars just a few short years ago, now we're at six and a half. The recommendation is to get that to eight to 10. You have eight to 10 million dollars sitting there as a cushion, you can absorb the blows. You can't absorb them forever and you've got to maintain some stability. If it goes down, you recover and then you're there. It's, it's allowing the organization to do exactly what you're saying. We made decisions to build, we made decisions to make improvements, we hired individuals. It's the crystal ball that we all have to adjust to saying, uh-oh, revenues aren't going to be there. And if you just have three million dollars on a thirty-two million dollar general fund, it doesn't take management very long to go, hold up, hold up. These folks, slow your roll. We have got to figure out how we're cutting three hundred, five hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of a nine million dollar budget because three million is the exposure of the entire organization minus utilities. And it wasn't that long ago, we were in here talking about transferring a million, a million and a half, two million out of utilities to create a little bit of a pocket for us to operate underneath. That's not sustainable either. We've got upset utility directors and department heads who are trying to create an enterprise system that funds itself. And here we are siphoning. We have many examples where we have siphoned money into the general fund because revenues are not there sustaining the fund. It is a clear and evident situation we have got to rectify. We cannot assume a small cash balance is going to be there to sustain the operation. It can't. And management isn't going to let it happen. We're not going to go negative. We're not. We're going to shut things down.
And, and part of what we've heard tonight too is that, say, for example, decided to do a two mil increase, that 1.3 million would be gobbled up so quickly with payroll, with the pay scale adjustments, a few things for Public Works, a little bit here, a little bit there, that we still don't have any money for Parks and Rec, essentially.
Essentially.
Yeah.
And I mean, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but you can't talk about our budget, you can't talk about our financial positions without bringing RCPD into the question because they're such a big part of what we do from a financial property tax perspective. Even if we had our own police department, folks, we would be spending that money. I'm not saying it's the cops. I'm saying it is a huge part of what we do as a community, as any city in the state of Kansas does. They have their own police force, they fund it well, don't get me wrong. But that isn't under Ron's discretion, that isn't, that person is not at the table, they're not in these conversations. It's not even an option. We go here. The fire department has made concessions. Most fire departments aren't making these concessions, but they've made them because they've been a team player and they've been part of the conversation. They're in the meetings, they hear what's going on. I mean, this is the first time in a long time. I've had other departments talk to you tonight and literally not like what they're seeing in their own Parks and Rec department. They, they feel for it. Rob, for two or three years, we leaned on very heavily for special street and highway money, for gas money, for STP. I mean, we relied on some sources that he was using just to plug gaps. We didn't do the street maintenance, we didn't pay for the people to go out and do the concrete panel replacement. That was probably 17, 18. We've done a lot in the last four years trying to plug the holes. It's not sustainable and we need a sustainable approach.
Jason, this is Commissioner Ready. I think, you know, Commissioner Haddasall brings up a good point and the same point we had when Commissioner McKee was here. It's going to be personnel is the only place where you can save or invest fifty thousand here, sixty thousand there. Fifty thousand here, sixty thousand there is not going to do much of anything. But each year, when we do step increases or pay increases, you know, you have about a million dollars. And that's where, when you talk about sustainability, that's what we need to look at. With, what are you, if you're suggesting increasing a mill or two every year, that's probably not going to happen either. Uh, so where, what does that sustainable plan look like? Because most of it, ninety percent of it is personnel. And, and that increases every year. And I think that's, that's what we need to try to figure out. If K-State enrollment is going to be at this pace and if tourism is not going to increase and if we don't have sales tax increasing and the state legislators aren't going to fund anything local and they put more unfunded mandates on us, I, I don't have an idea what that sustainable plan is going to look like. I can think about the near future, one, one or two years. But with personnel, and as a teacher, I know this. Whenever you go for negotiations, your, your personnel and benefits, because you want them to do well, you don't want to keep piling on them to the point where they break, where they leave. Uh, so how do you find that balance? And I, I often feel sometimes on our projects, we've overextended, you know? Building, a building is easier than operating it. And, and I, I want us to have that plan. Like, do we have to operate everything with our new facilities that are coming on? How do we do this and still take care of our personnel? And, and that, that's the one we have to dig into and figure out how to manage that, not only just for one or two years, but the, the property taxes is the only place where you're going to see that, that money can just continuously come in, but it's going to increase a million every year, even with personnel increases, uh, just salary increases is what I'm thinking. So, I, I, I'm looking forward to that discussion and I'm looking for solutions and I hope we find them together because I, I don't know the true path to that end.
You see, the interesting thing when people look at, you know, property taxes, out of the past ten years, it's really only been flat twice. You know, once last year and I think the other time was way back in like two thousand thirteen. Every other year, the mill levy's going up and out of, out of every year of the past ten, the actual dollar amount is going up. You know, which, which is part of what the legislature's talking about on truth and, you know, and taxation. So, you know, that, that troubles everybody. And, and the, the message that, you know, we need to, you know, it's like the water department, it's frustrating with enterprise funds that, you know, how to sustain it, just raise it three percent every year indefinitely. And people don't like that either. So, so I don't know, you know, what, what the, you know, what the solution is. But, but I don't think the solution is, uh, raise property taxes. Because the, the other side of the coin is, is, as those property taxes go up, that's why everybody moves to Potawatomi County or Milford or Abilene, because they don't want to pay our property taxes. So, so we can't grow the city by raising property taxes, but what we're doing is killing the city by doing that. And I understand, you know, one of the other things is with, with all these, you know, COVID ordinances, you know, just something simple like, you know, the restaurants are not having the business. And where does Parks and Rec get a lot of its money? It, it comes from the, by the drink tax and the restaurants. Because a third of that revenue goes to Parks and Rec and a third to social services and a third to the general fund. So, you know, as long as we keep our restaurants closed, we're taking a big hit on the general fund and Parks and Rec. And, and so we've, we've got to, we got to take a, you know, I think a hard, hard look at it. I don't know what the solution is. I, I sort of agree with the, with Mark. It, it seems like, you know, some things like the, the youth sports, you can probably outsource that fairly easy because there's people that know how to do that. Now, the, the technical details of how to run the Blue Earth Plaza, you know, water facility or, or the pool, that, I guess you need some technical expertise. I have no clue how to do that. And that's probably where we ought to put our effort right now is figure out, you know, where can we hire somebody or contract somebody to take care of that and get those open? Because people, people are going to be real upset i- if, if we don't have those facilities open. And I really think that Blue Earth Plaza, you know, little waterway thing is just used by everybody. That's going to be a real shame if that thing is closed. Now, if we have to close CECO, I can handle that. And I've always thought the stingray ought to be closed permanently in, in, in City Park because that's just a wasted effort. Uh, that, that whole thing just doesn't, doesn't make sense. So, so a lot of things on your list, you know, are good to go, but, but, uh, we need to relook some of those other ones because it's just not going to fly. We, we just got a lot of grief from everybody over that. And, and, and it may be necessary to raise fees, user fees to a certain extent. Got an email today, they wanted to know, uh, what are we going to do if the federal government raises the minimum wage to fifteen dollars an hour? And my initial thought was, I don't know how in the world we'd run the city pools when you got to pay lifeguards fifteen dollars an hour and you got twenty-four of them just in the City Park pool? And that'd break the bank. We'd have to have a user's fee of ten dollars a day for people to use the city pool. So, it may not get any better with, uh, some of the changes that, uh, some of the higher-level government may do to us.
I would just like to point out that the citizens in our community adopted a special tax to pay for our pools and to, uh, build our recreation centers. So, we know that we have their support for running those facilities. And it, and certainly the, many of the, the activities listed are, have become a reliable staple here in our community that people expect to have. And it was a real disappointment last summer when they had to be cut. But I also, I don't think they expect us to rob every other part of city government. Uh, I think we have to find the, as you just said, I think we have to find the balance and have these future conversations. Some of those aren't as critical as others. So, um, we can, some of it is negotiable, I guess, as we move along. I don't feel like we have examined the other parts of city, uh, city budget as, or, or programs as closely as we are Parks and Rec this evening. And we can't just focus on one area and where we might cut there when we are having department heads, you know, plead for an additional position or another piece of equipment or another program. Uh, so there's balance ahead here.
One, uh, quick comment, I guess. One, I'm, I'm the, I'm the new guy on the commission. Everyone else has a lot of experience, but what I've seen over the last year is, um, a very lean city department, uh, various, nine departments that are very lean, that are, are facing a lot of retention issues, workplace environment, uh, type of morale issues, things that are just natural sympto- symptoms of being underfunded to being asked to do more with less for a sustained period of time. And when you look at those other places where, I mean, where would you potentially find, uh, a bunch of money somewhere? We, we've looked, uh, and there, it's not there. When you go back and we have this discussion, which is a secular discussion, um, about taxes, because we know the community is just, the, the loudest noises are, they don't like property taxes. Um, they don't want to pay higher property taxes. They've had tremendous increases in property taxes over the last decade. And you look at closely what, uh, what, what you said earlier, Jason. The property taxes for the city, general fund, you know, it's, it's ten percent at most, uh, three million dollars eh, out of thirty and eleven mills that, the significant amount of the property taxes are going to fund the schools, are going to fund the police, are going to fund the other entities. Um, and we've increased our fees, our other, our things, and I think we have to understand what that looks like to get to a sustainable level. Because we can't count on the sales tax apparently forever. Um, it's plateaued. To, to staff what we've already invested in. Staff the infrastructure we've already invested in. That's the, without hidden water fees, which is going to be called a, a property, hidden property tax anyway, rather raise a property tax than do another water fee. That, those are the numbers I think we really got to talk about. Um, so I want to put that out there because I don't think there is something hidden somewhere else in some department where we're going to find a bag of cash to fund the rest of the city budget. I think we have to talk about that balance and acknowledge the property taxes go to fund things like our schools and our, and our police, which are very important. But it's not our responsibility to solve, uh, their increases. It's, uh, what we have before us is, is, uh, three, four cents of the jet, of a doll, of a property tax dollar in the general fund.
Haddasall here. The, uh, the problem is, is Manhattan's always, we've, it's a great place to live because we have cool things to do. Whether it was the arts in the park, whether it's the pools, whether it's Aggieville, the Discovery Center, the zoo, all these things. And, and part of the problem is you could go live cheaper in Leonardville, but you, I don't know if they have a pool. If they is, it's, it's a small dinky bathtub. And the thing is, so you, you, your trade, life is a trade-off of, yeah, either you live in a, in a, in a small town that doesn't have many cool things and it's cheap to live there, or you move to Manhattan and you go, man, the property taxes suck, but wow, they got nice parks and they got ten-foot trails where I can push my baby stroller and dog on and, and it's cool and it's nice. And they've got activities for the kids. They, they run the high school intermural program, apparently. And so, there's all kinds of things that, that the city does, but it all comes with a price tag. And when, and when I'm, uh, out of town, people are paying twenty-five percent of your sales taxes and you don't feel that pain because people are coming to town and paying it for us, it's, it's great. And as soon as people stay home because there's no K-State football games or they're afraid to come to town and get COVID, suddenly, um, we're stuck paying that twenty-five percent of the sales tax out of some other tax or fee or something. And either people are going to learn, they, they say, yes, this is a valuable enough service and program and deal that the city offers, I'm willing to pay for it. Or they're going to say, yeah, you're right. I think we can get by with one pool and a splash park and my kids will go play softball with their dad or something, or the neighborhood kids will get together and somebody will organize something. Um, or you're going to have to pay more of it yourself because the visitors who we relied on to pay a bunch of our sales tax or part of our sales tax, um, aren't here. But so, all, yeah, the, the solution is obviously for sales tax to skyrocket back up and then add a little bit of backstop of some other money. But that's a five or seven-year turnaround plan to get the sales tax up to where it's, it's pulling a bunch of extra weight, not this year or next year. And so, that's going to be the painful part. And, and when we'll hear from it during the budget period, what's, what's important? Keeping the programs or paying a little bit more? And everybody's got a different opinion. I could go down the list of, of things here and it's like, yeah, I don't care about the pottery classes and the homeschool PE, but some people do. And I sure don't care about youth soccer at my age or early childhood activities, but there's advocates for that too. And so, that's, that's the problem is figuring out, spreading the pain evenly so that, uh, um, nobody's happy and nobody's, nobody gets everything and nobody gets nothing. That's always been the, the challenge of, of government, I think.
We appreciate the comments this evening. It's, it's a conversation that'll continue right up until August when we have our public hearing on the budget and we decide what we're going to pass for twenty-two. It's a similar conversation we've had in the past. We have to start making some decisions today. We have a little cushion, but I get so nervous about saying the cushion's there, go spend it. That's three and a half million dollars that we got from the federal government that we didn't know we were going to get the majority of until November. Is there some on the horizon? Maybe, maybe not. Were sales tax on the horizon? Hard to tell, but that's what we rely on to run this operation predominantly, predominantly. And when it's that kind of scenario and situation, it's very difficult for us to say, full steam ahead, go hire everybody, go spend that thirty-two, thirty-three million dollars in the general fund because you may only take in thirty. And you just lost that three million dollars the federal government just gave you. That's what we have to wait here. That's what we have to contemplate. And too many years in a row where we just ratcheted down. We have to start making those decisions. We will and we'll be back in front of you to talk about twenty-two. I say twenty-two, I really mean twenty-five. Because I want a four or five-year strategy because I know we can't get it back in a year. We can't. We didn't get here in a year and we're not going to get back in a year. So, again, do appreciate the feedback.
This city manager on fear, I would just add that, uh, you know, COVID has complicated this worse. Uh, it's helped us a little bit with some other money that we weren't expecting, but from a, we didn't know that was coming. So, we weren't able to plan on that and we planned for the worst. And, you know, we got lucky. Will we get lucky going forward? I don't know. Um, but Senate Bill thirteen is going to make us have that decision in July versus August. So, there's a lot of unknowns out there and we don't see recovery of some of our staple revenue sources, which are all down, uh, coming forward. Appreciate your time.
Okay, long four hours, uh, but we got some great information. Appreciate everybody's time and we'll, we'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.